Thank you Frank. Good evening, welcome to the Foxborough Board of Selectmen, October 29th, meeting at the Foxborough High School Media Center. Tonight at 7:00 PM we're gonna have citizens input. 7:05 Planning Board, acceptance resignation of Sharon McLaughlin for the Planning Board, appointment of John Rhodes, his regular member term ending 5/114. That'll be a joint meeting. At 7:10 we have a public hearing, transfer of all alcohol, restaurant license, change of location, pledge of license and stock from Foxborough Realty Association LLC to SV Patriot Place LLC, DBA Splitsville Patriots Place, 220 Patriots Place. Manager Paul G. Hollerin Jr. Two, application of Calm Victorious license for SV Patriots Place LLC. And three, application for a seven-day entertainment license for SV Patriots Place LLC. At 7:40 PM another public hearing, alter of the premises of all alcohol restaurant license for MPS LLC DBA Gillette Stadium, 1 Patriots Place, manager James J. Nolan Jr. At 8:15 PM Board of Selectmen discussion Saga Restaurant Liquor License, BOSS Outside Meetings, Town Manager Search and Town Hall Project. And before we start tonight, I'd just like to take a minute to mention the outstanding donations by the Kraft family for Foxborough boy Sam Burns to match funding to help Pajeria Research. I'm sure everybody in this room's probably seen the documentary on HBO and it was, not to mention outstandingly done. For those of us who know the family, and those of us who getting to know the family, it's a great thing and it's what keeps Foxborough the best community there is around. Everybody was touched by it and I just wanna speak for the board and say how much this board, the townspeople, Foxborough, the Burns family appreciate all the efforts by the Kraft group. Okay, so pledge allegiance tonight, Jim? Could you lead us? We have your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no reach and justice for all.
Is there anybody here for citizens input? Roger?
Roger Hill, 19 Park Avenue. Here for four little items that I wanna put before the public. This morning after completing the review of three technical proposals that were submitted on the building that we planned, we opened the price proposals. Unfortunately, all three of the proposals were above the budget, so I'm going to recommend to the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners that we, on the floor of town meeting, move for no action on the article and we'll go back and take a look at ways to scale it down or do what we have to do to get the price down with the budget lines. Secondly, I got a couple of complaints this week about a rock that we put in the island at the corner of Payson Road and North Street. We have a sign there that has a propensity to get knocked down about every two weeks. And the last time it got knocked down, we decided to put the rock there for a few days until we could get something that was, let's say, more, less accident prone on the corner to do the same job. So the rock will be there for a little while, but it's portable and we'll move it away when the time comes. Thirdly, next week we'll be doing substantial amount of asphalt paving on different streets within the town, just wanna let everybody know that. It's getting near the end, but the problem is that we didn't get our Chapter 90 money until really late this year, so we're playing catch-up ball and we'll do the best we can on that. And the good news is that this morning at about 7 o'clock, we completed the major 24-hour pumping test of the new plant on Oak Street. And I might tell you that the manganese going into the plant was at a level of .22 parts per million and coming out after filtration was .003. And the iron went from .07 to zero. Hopefully Thursday we have a DEP certification meeting up there. If DEP certifies the plant on Thursday, we expect to put it online on Friday. It's been a long year, a lot of grief, but we got it done and it's working beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you Roger. Anybody else for citizens input? Please come up to the mic and your name for the record please.
My name is Mary Smith. I reside at 136 Coke Acid Street. And the reason I'm here tonight is to show support for Splitsville, and I'm gonna tell you why. When my children were younger and we wanted to have some family fun, especially in the area of bowling, we had to leave town. We had to travel to Norwood, Franklin, North Attleboro. And if we really wanted to extend it, we went as far as Milford. Now, this was, you know, it created a lot of trouble leaving town, even when we had our children's birthday parties at bowling alleys, same thing, we had to leave town. Now, flash forward, when my sons were much older, bowling became the weekend choice of activity. And since there was really nothing to do for my children in the 13 to 15-year-old age bracket, we had to go to North Attleboro. Well, while myself and other parents had like the idea that our sons had some place to go, there was the inconvenience again of traveling to North Attleboro, late in the evening to go and pick them up and whatnot. So, now the possibility of Splitsville coming to Patriots Place, that inconvenience can be eliminated and youth teens will have an age-appropriate recreation facility to go to within their own town. I also believe that Splitsville will be a nice way to round out the family experience at Patriots Place. At the moment, families can enjoy eating, shopping, seeing a movie, seeing the stadium and skating within the winter months. With a bowling alley, families will have another local venue in which they can enjoy quality family time. And this is why I put my support behind Splitsville.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Please come up.
Ann Oaks, 10 Austin Lane. When I heard that Splitsville might be coming to Patriots Place, I thought it was great 'cause I'm a bowler, I'm also a grandmother. I love the idea that it's multi-generational. I love the idea also that it's gonna be upscale. And friends of mine have been to it at Downtown Disney and they absolutely loved it. The third reason why I thought it was great is that the revenue that it will bring in. So, in summary, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Hi Ron Young, Lafayette House Route 1. We've kinda talked around on Route 1 with some of the other business owners and we just feel it'll be good for the area, 'cause it's gonna bring more families to the area. Hopefully more business will be the butters of Patriots Place. So, everybody up there's in favor of it. I haven't heard anybody up there against it. Okay?
Thanks Mike.
Hi, my name's Paul Flaherty. I'm from Davios. I just think that Splitsville will complete the Lifestyle Center. I mean, it's really a great thing that we have going up there. There's a lot of different kinds of venues. And this is the kinda place that the kids can go in the daytime and then as it turns to evening, it'd be some entertainment for the adults. So, I just think this package, you know, once again, they've chosen a different venue. There's all kinds of different categories, different kinds of restaurants, different kinds of things to do. And this is something that adults can do in the evening and the kids can do in the daytime. It's just a perfect fit for what we have going up there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Rob Christiansen with CBS Scene, and I just wanna kinda echo what Paul said. Down at our corridor end of CBS Scene, there's really nothing there right now. Anything that would bring more people onto Patriots Place would be great for us. We're fully supportive of Splitsville. We'd like to see more traffic down our end of Patriots Place, 'cause like I said, there's really nothing down there. And we feel it'd be great for our business, so we're fully in support of the operation coming.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rob Lucante. I'm a resident, 24 Hayden Drive. Actually, just moved to Foxborough in the last year, having our one-year anniversary in February. Two kids in the town, one at the Igoe Kindergarten and the other is a preschool. We're just offered at the Burrell School this year. So, great to be in the town. We love it so far. I wanna stand here and support for Splitsville. I think Patriots Place has a really good job at tailoring some activities for kids. I know when we first moved here, we found it to be one of the only areas that offered events going on for the kids, where they can come out there and whether it be a petting zoo or some sort of healthy fitness event. It's been great. We love going there. It's clean, it's well-kept. Splitsville, I had the opportunity to visit in Tampa while on work and down there for traveling for work, really was impressed with the venue. I got a little upset with the publicity that I saw in the reporter last week or this week talking about comparing it to Howl at the Moon in Boston, which is definitely not what this venue was like. I don't think that there are, at least the one that I was at, it was really family-oriented. I think the adults that were there were there like any other restaurant setting. There was not, you know, booze flowing out of buckets or whatever other the commentary was. Also, in looking at, I work a little bit in the consumer good business and comparing Howl at the Moon and the amount of covers of people that come in there versus, you know, a venue at Patriots Place like Splitsville, it's almost comparing apples and oranges. I feel like in the couple of years that I've known Howl at the Moon in Boston, I mean, I'm guessing close to a million people have probably come through there. I don't know the exact number of covers, but to see two or three instances that get brought up in the negative light is disappointing, considering that accuracy rate of three into a million people is like 99.99% kosher most of the time. So, I just looked at that as a little bit unfair. I wanna come down and speak out and in support of Splitsville and we're gonna pay it upon that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's it? Anybody else? All right, moving forward, we have a joint meeting tonight with the Planning Board. The Plan Board, like to come up? I imagine you guys wanna open your meeting?
Yes, we are.
Oh, you did? All right. Okay.
Thanks for having us. We're here tonight to ask for the board to accept the resignation of Shannon McLaughlin. She's been an excellent member, but for family reasons, she has had to resign since she's gonna move to the town of Sharon for some specific educational opportunities for her two children. And, you know, she's been a great member. We loved having her, but, you know, things that you have to do for your family often take precedence over even the desire to volunteer for a good thing for the town. So, we wanna say we're glad for the time she served and we appreciate the fact that she gave us kinda notice that she did. And that also opens a door for us to ask you to jointly appoint with us John Rhodes, who's been our associate member for a number of years. He's been outstanding for us. He's an engineer and he brings a lot of perspective to our board that no other member can really bring. He's got extensive experience with planning and development and environmental issues. And, you know, he's been a great fit and we would really appreciate the fact that our board, I think, is unanimous in supporting him and we would hope that your board could see fit to do the same.
Okay. Any discussion next to the board?
I'll start it off, obviously thanking Shannon for, I know she spent a lot of time in the board and going through the ordeal of running and going through the election process and serving. So, certainly wanna thank her. John, I've had the opportunity to see you at meetings. The fact that you're a civil engineer and you bring all the background with respect to the drainage and the wetlands, it's almost like having a paid consultant on staff. And he carries himself exceptionally on the board with professionalism, so I'm very grateful for the time that you've spent. And as I understand this, you'll be, after we vote if it's approved, you'll be appointed until election of 2014.
Right.
Correct. So, I look forward to that. Thank you.
You know, I echo Jim's sentiments. I've been to a number of Planning Board meetings and John is always there. He's served very well as an alternate, you know, always being at the meetings. And I think it's a perfect choice to fill in for Shannon, who will be missed. Thank you.
All right.
Shannon will be missed, but I agree. I think John, having seen John at the Planning Board meetings and the contributions that you've made all along, I think you're a great addition to the board and definitely support the board's choice.
Mr. Mark, what I'd like to do is read the letter that Shannon submitted. I think it's a very good letter and then I'll make a few motions afterward if I could. This was addressed to Bob Cutler from Shannon McLaughlin. "It's with great regret that I attended my resignation as a member of the Foxborough Planning Board. I'll be moving out of Foxborough on November 1st, 2013 and will no longer be able to hold this position. My resignation is effective immediately. I would be remiss if I did not state the great admiration I have for Foxborough, my fellow Planning Board members and the entire community. While I'll be leaving this town, I cannot leave behind the openness and welcoming spirit that made this, the community, the best choice for our family nearly four years ago. I wish you, the Planning Board and the entire town of Foxborough, the best in the future. Sincerely, Shannon McLaughlin." I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resignation of Shannon McLaughlin with the greatest gratitude.
Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And secondarily, I'll make the motion that we accept the appointment of John Rhodes from alternate to now a full member of the Board of Selectmen until the next election.
Second.
I'm sorry. You're not on the Board of Selectmen. Planning Board.
You can have, hey, let's revisit that.
Don't bail out now.
I'll switch you with Mark.
Can you second that?
Second.
Second by Lorraine. Discussion? I've had the opportunity to work side by side with John. We had some good times, spent the whole summer together and I can't think of anybody that would be a better fit with this team. And Shannon will be missed and, you know, she's, it's a shame she's leaving the town. I think she would've been a great asset in the future. So, any more discussion?
This is a joint vote.
Yep.
Right, we have to cast our vote, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint John as a permanent member until the election in May.
Second.
Alls in favor? Aye.
John?
We've already made a motion.
Second by Lorraine. Any more discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you John.
Appreciate it.
Anything you'd like to say, John?
I was worried for a minute that I'd say the owner too sees enter.
These guys jumped at the chance to vacate. Stay with the Planning Board.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the kind comments. It's appreciated.
Take care.
One last thing, Mr. Chairman. Shannon couldn't be here this evening, but she did ask us to pass along to your board that your board needs to appoint someone to the Design Review Committee to replace Dick Leggie, who's moved out of town. So, there is an opening here, it is your appointment and we will be having some stuff come forward that the Design Review has to.
Okay, so it's not on our agenda tonight?
No. It's just a. So, would we be looking for, you would have this discussion, would you bring forward a recommendation from your board rather than us just picking somebody from your board?
We haven't, but.
Could you do that? I mean, that gives us some insight for us who wants to do it and who you think is best fitted for it.
The fact that you folks discuss it, it'll get in the paper and it'll help bring someone up to it.
And can you just explain briefly what the Design Review Board does?
Well, Gordon's on it, so.
Thanks. Tonight I'm having a little difficulty talking tonight, I'm sorry. There is a Design Review District that basically covers the downtown area and slight extension beyond it. The purpose of the Design Review Committee is to look at the architecture of any buildings that have proposed modifications that are proposed in that area to ensure that the architecture is consistent with the neighborhood and an improvement or maintain the status or quality in the design district.
Some of the projects that I remember, like the CBS that was built, went through that with the fencing and the signage and the facade, the library, anything that's around that downtown area. So, it's an important board and I think it's worth discussing once they come back with their recommendation.
Is this a position that someone would have to fill out a form to?
Committee.
Committee appointment? Okay.
Yeah, so they can do that at the Town Hall, Selectmen's Office, but I do wanna move on from that. Will you be coming forward with an alternate for your board?
Well, the first step is.
To yourselves, I mean.
Is what we did tonight. Then now it's out in the public, there is an opening as an alternate. And that we'll be looking for someone to step forward that's interested in that, be vetted by the boards and then we make the selection.
Okay, great. Any else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we, sorry for the delay, but all the citizens inputs, we'd love to start this right on time, but we're a couple minutes late. John, can you read the public notice for the public hearing?
It's a legal notice. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Laws Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October 29th, 2013, at 7:10 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, on application for transfer of license, change of location and pledge of license and pledge of stock of annual all alcohol beverage restaurant license from Foxborough Realty Associates LLC, 1 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass, to SV Patriot Place LLC, doing business as Splitsville Patriot Place. Manager Paul G. Hollerin Jr. with a new location at 220 Patriots Place, Foxborough, Massachusetts. Premises is 12 bowling alleys, two lounges, two bars and an outdoor patio. All interested persons are invited to attend the hearing, Board of Selectmen, Foxborough, Mass.
Thank you, John. First of all, Frank, are you able to get the images? I know you're in the back room of all these pictures, the way they set up with the cameras here? Because I don't know if he's got a camera that can catch that for the folks at home. And I don't know if I'm gonna get a reply either. You can. Okay, thank you Frank. Okay, thank you. All right. And we'll open it up tonight with the presentation, from you gentlemen. And then we're gonna go to David DeLuca, attorney here, and Chief O'Leary, and then we'll open it up to the board and the people in the audience.
Okay, great. Thank you for the record, Brian Early, Patriot Place, General Manager. When I was last here in front of the board back in August with an update on some of the things going on at Patriot Place, mostly having to do with my more formal presentation I made back in March, we discussed the concept of a bowling, bowling lanes coming to Patriot Place. And, you know, we, I think the Planning Board had been told this was something we were thinking about. But it really goes back three years of due diligence and research that Patriot Place has done in the marketplace, both with research of our own patrons coming to Patriot Place, but also through working with consultants and knowing that and hearing very loudly that a bowling concept was something that was of great demand to the marketplace, certainly to the communities around Patriot Place. We went and wanted to find the right fit for that. We've seen other models, both in this market, you know, and closer to Boston, as well as other parts of the country. And it was through a lot of work and due diligence that we found what we believe to be the best-in-class in the country in terms of bowling concept. Splitsville Lanes is operating in a number of states, including Texas, Virginia, substantially in Florida. And the, if anyone's had the chance to see their operation at Downtown Disney, it is phenomenal. And it was the vetting that Disney, the Disney Corporation did to bring and win Splitsville to their incredible venue in Orlando. It proved to us that these were the, these were the team that we wanted to be at Patriot Place. We, you know, boldly say we feel that Patriot Place is similar to Disney in terms of its destination, in terms of bringing families to the area from many, many communities to Foxborough. And we feel this is such a difference-maker as we move into now the, you know, the sixth-plus year of the operation of Patriot Place. You know, we talked a lot at what was coming next and what we were gonna be doing next and certainly as the market has dictated, we had to continue to make adjustments and find what will work best at Patriot Place. We've done a good job with a lot of the new concepts brought in and this certainly is the next big new concept that we feel is the right fit and the best opportunity for Patriot Place. So, tonight with me, to my left is Paul Hollerin, to his left Guy Revel, Joe Hanley is representing Splitsville, and to my far left is Mark Gibson, all from Splitsville. So, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Joe to start the presentation.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Quiltean Miller. Pleased to be here, just to give you a quick overview of the proposal and then hand it off to the team to walk you through the plans, the site, the plans and the concept. Also passed out to you, which you may have already, a letter of support that we received from State Representative Barrows and Senator, State Senator Jim Timmeltie, supporting this application and speaking, I would suggest to the need for a concept like this to help vitalize the economic activity in the immediate area. I also passed out what we prepared is the applicant's statement of substantial public need as it relates to this proposal and obviously your review under the statute of our application. Along those lines, I would suggest to you that you have, that you have an ideal applicant here before you with respect to the statutory requirements for the public need for your approval, as well as the character and fitness of the operator. As Brian indicated, this dynamic use is something that is completely distinct and different and unique to the area, that being a bowling concept with an ancillary entertainment capability to it. What the team is proposing to do is to be a part of Patriot Place in this space that is presently vacant, to vitalize the space with, again, a use that is, as you heard from members of the community, in great demand, is supported by the elected officials and as Brian has indicated, is also supported by numerous consumers who took the time to provide their input about what they'd like to see. That being a different opportunity for entertainment, for bowling, for family-friendly activity, private events and birthdays and the like. I'll also just say in closing, Mr. Hollerin, who is the local partner here, has extensive experience as a responsible operator and licensee here in the Commonwealth. He's worked very closely recently with Jim Staples, who's with us tonight as well, from JBS Professional Services. Mr. Staples is a former ABCC Senior Investigator and someone who has worked with a lot of licensees and law enforcement in the area. Mr. Hollerin and this team take their responsibilities very seriously. They have taken the time to be very familiar with your rules and regulations, as well as those of the state. And again, I would suggest to you that you have an ideal team. So, at this point, I would like to hand over the presentation to Mark Gibson to take you through the site and the plans and then have Guy and Paul explain more on the operations and the management side. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Mark.
Good evening. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I wanted to just give you some background on the concept of Splitsville and of our experience. And real quick, just on where it's located in the project, for all of you that don't know, it's that elevation you're looking at right there is right here as you're coming down the throat from the Renaissance and turning towards Splitsville Stadium. We'll get to the floor plan a little later, but Guy and I have operated restaurants and bars in the state of Florida for over 20 years. Back in 2002, 2003, we thought it was a great idea, was that there's a lot of people that love bowling. People don't always love bowling alleys. And we thought if you took a restaurant and kind of overlaid bowling lanes on top of the restaurant and had a commitment to food and beverage and bowling and entertainment altogether, that you could come up with a kind of a multifaceted entertainment concept. The first Splitsville that we opened up was in Tampa, Florida, in 2003.
I get it. Excuse me.
And as Brian mentioned, we have five current locations. The most recent, which opened in December of 2012, at Downtown Disney and Walt Disney World. And hopefully the number six one will be sometime plus or minus April of 2014 at Patriot Place. The concept of bowling, it's a very social, it's very interactive. We do, someone used a word earlier, was speaking on her behalf, multi-generational. It really does go from family bonding to team building. You have everything from six-year-old birthday parties. You have everything from six-year-old birthday parties to, believe it or not, I hosted my great aunt's 95th birthday party in Tampa, it opened back in 2004. But, you know, to support the investment in a property like this, it's a 20,000-square-foot building, plus or minus, it'll be plus roughly $4,500,000. You've got to extend the day party. You've got to be able to do food, you've got to be able to do beverage, you've got to be able to do, obviously, the bowling side. So the Splitsville, and Guy will probably walk you through the floor plan and design. The Splitsville model allows for various types of consumption. As you see, we take design very seriously. Our finishes are very nice and upscale. The design is not the most efficient or effective because we separate the lanes, we create areas of consumption, whether it's dining, or congregation, or beverage, or entertainment between the lanes. You get lines of sight and perspective that you don't normally get. We also have a large commitment to food, and again, obviously, everybody that serves food.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Believes our food is very good.
Thank you.
But from day one...
And those are actually our menus from Downtown Disney location?
These are the menus from Downtown Disney. But back in 2003, when we opened, we included sushi, our pizza, our pizza crusts is homemade and hand-tossed. So we have a very broad, diverse menu. And even at Disney, which I think we don't have access to those numbers, is probably one of the top two or three performing bowling concepts in the country, we're still doing an excessive 40% food out of the venue. So kind of all three legs of the stool, the food, the bowling, and the beverage side are all critical to the overall kind of revenue plan. It allows us to obviously hit the projections we think we're going to hit, as well as supporting the investment.
Also, I'll jump in a little bit. Since Mark and I have been partners for a long time, the joke is he's the brain and I'm the heart, and together we make a human, right? So we usually interrupt each other more. I thought Mickey and Minnie and Goofy were a tough crowd, but I want to make sure that you guys really understand the commitment that we have to Foxborough and to Patriot Place. We're in Tampa, we're in South Miami. Everybody thinks South Miami, they think South Beach. We're in South Miami, which is a very small town in the middle of Miami. Fredericksburg, Virginia, very small town in the middle of Virginia. Fairview, Texas, which is out in North Dallas. So when we go into a community, we really get involved in that community. And it was funny, walking in here, I almost felt like I was at home. For two things, obviously, from my accent, I'm not from around here. But born in North Carolina, live in Florida now, but I'm from a very small town of 3,500. What I loved about doing my research about Foxborough was when I went on the website for the Foxborough High School, that video that the high schoolers did, that was unbelievable. I was blown away how cool that was. So as we're thinking about different things we can do within the community, you know, I kind of got excited that they said the media center was going to be where our board was going to be. Mark talked about with Disney. Disney picked us over a lot of different bowling operators, and they did for, you know, four or five real distinct reasons. One, we are great operators. I've got three kids, Mark's got two, Paul's got three. We do this to put our kids through college, so this is not a passing fancy. This is our life. This is our career, and we treat it like that. We're great operators, we're very passionate about our business, and we get involved in the community. And Disney saw that from the standpoint that we were going to take it from an entrepreneurial spirit and not be some big corporation that was going to come in, you know, and run it by the EBITDA, that we're really going to be the heart and soul of it. And it's been interesting. I see a lot of similarities in Foxborough that we have in some of our other towns and the type of events that we've done with the charities, with the schools, with YMCA. It's, I don't know, just, like I said, you can tell when I go into an area, it kind of feels good. And this is that feeling that I have when I come here.
And let me tie together me and, so I'm the local guy. I've been here my whole life. I grew up in Massachusetts. My sister and brother live in Rentham. I've always felt the bowling concept, the boutique bowling concept was, you know, obviously, I own the Howl, I own the business in downtown Boston. But I felt the boutique bowling business was a business that was well-rounded. It was daytime kids' parties, it was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday nights kind of events, corporate events, and you could do a much better, well-rounded business than I do, quite candidly, in my business in Boston. And so I really wanted to do a concept like this. And so I talked to the Patriots, probably starting two years ago now, about this. But we need to find a partner. You know, we can't, this is not something you can just fake as you go. You need to find someone who knows what they're doing. And so that started the process. The Howl component, Howl and Splitsville have been in business going back 20 years or so. So my partners at Howl knew these gentlemen here, and that's when the discussion started, and that's how the connection happened. So it was me beginning as a local Massachusetts operator. I've been in this bar/restaurant business for 10 years. I know the newspaper story that everyone here is probably very familiar with at this point. And I've been doing this for a long time. I've had two different licenses in the state. I've been held a license for 10 years. I've had over a million people go through my establishments in that period of time. And I have had a couple issues, but I've dealt with them all proactively. One, the first issue in '08, which was an underage. I was there that night, and one thing I said, in reading your regulations, I saw the bowl type, no absentee managers. And I am not one. I'm on-site all the time. I was there that night. I dealt with that situation, it was, I don't know if everyone wants to get into these things individually, but it was two girls with real IDs, it just wasn't them. And the licensing officials who saw them had actually recognized them because they caught them a week before, using the same IDs. So, but my point being, I then reached out to my liquor attorney, I said, "Listen, I think I'm doing a good job running this business. I've had a long track record of no issues, but now I have one issue. I need to deal with it proactively. So please put me in touch with the best liquor consultant you have in the state that you know of." And he connected me with Jim Staples. This was back in 2008, so my relationship with Jim goes back five, six years now. Five years now. And then I had a second violation probably three years later for a couple BU kids who are using underage, using fake IDs again. And I said to Jim, I said, "Listen, you guys may not see it out here, but in Boston with 300,000 college kids, the onslaught of fake identifications is very real. It's something that I deal with daily. I've dealt with registered motor vehicles on it a lot." And I said to Jim, "How do I respond? These things are coming quickly." And Jim said, "The best thing to do, there's an ID scanning system out there called Advanced ID Detection. It's the best ID scanner on the market. They're very expensive, but they're the best way you can respond to this and try to prevent this type of action." So I went out and bought two of them to make sure that we had one at all times. And so, yes, while I've had a couple issues over those 10 years, I think the track record is very strong. I've had Chief O'Leary into my business this week. I had Boston police come out and meet with him and tell the chief their views of me and their support of me as an operator in downtown Boston. And I firmly believe we could have put a manager, a different manager of record on this, that had a clean record. But I firmly believe that he would not have been, whoever that person would have been, would not have been nearly as capable as I am. With 10 years of experience in managing this facility in a way you want it managed, and the way I want it managed, the way we all want it managed, to eliminate the risk of underage, eliminate the risk of over-serving. And I have that experience. And so I just wanted to make that out there, because I am very proud of my record on this front, and I was not very proud of that article, I guess, to put it that way. So this relationship started probably about a year ago, when we started putting this concept together, and these guys are best-in-class for what they do. The Howl component will be a couple nights a week that just provides a form of entertainment. It's not the tail that wags the dog, though. Splitsville is the 75% driver of what this business is. And I think you and this community is getting a top-notch, top-flight management team that has a local presence. This is not outside operates, I don't have anyone locally, just dropping a GM. I'm here every night. I live 20 minutes from here. And a, I think, a real good amenity to this community that should provide jobs, should provide tax revenue, and should be done in a responsible manner, in our opinion.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just to speak to the financial aspects, too. You have the application before you, $4.5 million investment in the construction, and speaking, I guess, finally, more to the public need, the impact of 125 jobs, which we focus on locally, and tax revenue of $75,000 to $100,000 a year, tax impact, so. Thank you.
Anything else you want to add?
If you would like to walk you through the floor plan and...
I'd like you to do that. That would be fun. Thank you.
And also, Splitsville, as I alluded to it earlier, we kind of divide the lanes. It's something that we haven't seen any of our competitors do across the country, and it's not just to make our architects' life and our contractors' life difficult. We think it really does create, because there are little vignettes, and every time you bowl, people love bowling. It's happy competition. If your competitor bowls a strike in the 10th frame, you give them a high five. You have many celebrations throughout the event. But again, in a traditional bowling alley, you'll line up 16, 24, 36, 48 lanes in a row, and it just creates a big wall of bowling. So we've always tweaked the lanes in this property, that really the only way they could go was this way. But you have dining, beverage in here, here's your welcome center, your main entry down the center, and we just create little pockets, and most people have never been. If you're at this table, you're literally almost at the pin, you can see someone bowling towards you. You just get different lines of sight and perspective, which we think kind of helps, you know, break the ice, break the ice. It creates more natural socialization. You just have a very uptempo, interactive, and, you know, you can see families and kids bowling. Like we see little Johnny here, that's Disney or Tampa. And it just, it creates a much more conducive environment for people to have a good time, whether it's corporate team building, whether it's, you know, bonding with family, whether it's just, you know, people hanging out. So this big block here is back, a house and kitchen. You've got a freight and delivery elevator, which comes right up into the kitchen. You've got a corridor which will allow food delivery at volume to this area without coming through here. And then as you depart, this is one of the exits from the theater, so it'll be all glass, 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 around the here, a glass storefront here, new entry vestibule, potentially glass or garage doors here, and then glass there. So it's a very visual concept. We say visual is vital, so to communicate it. If we could teleport you guys all to Downtown Disney, or Tampa, or to Fairview, Texas, and walk in the building, you know, once you see it, people get it, and we think you would all be a...
Yeah, and it's really a good combination from the design perspective, where it's kind of retro and hip together, and it kind of marries the two, just like we talk about, you know, I use one of my friends in Tampa who's an attorney. He can go there with his wife and kids and have a blast, or have his daughter's birthday party. He can go there with his law firm and have a corporate event, a business outing, then he can go with his wife and two or three other couples. To get one concept where you can go same person three different times and have a good time, it's hard to get. That doesn't usually work. Usually, your concepts are very pigeonholed, and we think between the food, the bowling, and the entertainment is what makes us so special. And you can see it through some of the other pictures. I mean, those lockers on the wall at Downtown Disney are actually old Brunswick lockers from the 1950s. I bought them in San Francisco, and we shipped them in, had them sandblasted, redone, painted. It just gives that nostalgic feel with the fabric, the cushion on the welcome center. That literally, that picture right there is great because it shows, you walk in, you go dining, you go to the welcome center, you've got all the shoes back there, and that's kind of the brain of the operation. We have lane concierge that actually take your party to the lane with your shoes in a basket, so you can put on your shoes right there. We put your names in the computer for you. It really is kind of bowling first class. And it's really, even at Downtown Disney, where they have all this magic all around them, people are blown away, like, you know, they're walking through the bowling alley with, you know, following somebody with the shoes in a basket. It gives you that special feeling that kind of just really takes it over the top. And, you know, Mark and I have always said is, we're there to exceed your expectations every day, every way. And if we do that, first of all, you walk in, you see the design, you're like, wow. And then you go and you follow somebody taking you with your bowling shoes to the lane, you know, the type of material you're sitting on, everything's custom, everybody's like, wow. And then what really gets you is when the food comes. Because what we've always said is, you come for the bowling, you come back for the food. People are blown away. There will be people that will just walk into Splitsville and eat, even if they're not bowling. Our food's that good. So that's where, as you can tell, we're a little passionate about our concept. But it's, it really does get you excited, that'll get you that day-in-and-day-out business on a regular basis. Thank you very much. Does the board want to continue with my set plan and talk to Chief O'Leary and Attorney DeLuca? Or do you want to ask proposed questions now, these gentlemen?
You were going to go to Attorney DeLuca, then?
Yeah, either or. Yeah. You want to continue that path?
Just one question. The total occupancy of the restaurant, or, you know, maximum capacity is what? Just to refresh my memory?
It's going to be somewhere between 800 and 900 people, I believe.
Okay.
And you're aware of the bylaws in Foxborough for police details? Okay, great. Just while we're bringing that up. We talked to Chief O'Leary when he came down to Downtown Disney about that. Okay. Lorraine, any questions at this time?
No.
Jenny?
Not at this time.
James?
I think I like the concept of listening to the attorney and Chief O'Leary.
Yes.
Do you mind?
Not at all.
Okay. Mr. Holian, do you plan on being just an opening manager, or do you plan on being there permanently?
We're going to be bringing a general manager from Splitsville in. I think from a control perspective, we felt it was appropriate that I be the manager of record, because he's not as familiar with the laws of Massachusetts, liquor controls in Massachusetts. So I'll probably be the manager of record for a period of time until we're all comfortable that he's learned the laws, not in Massachusetts, but the town, obviously, to a level at which point we will then come back and petition to have him change the manager of record.
And he is moving up from Florida, moving to Foxborough, and he has been with our company a very good amount of time, been general manager of an operation in Fredericksburg, Virginia, which houses 12 theaters, 17 lanes, with our combination business in Fredericksburg. It's about a between 75 and 100,000-square-foot building. And then he's also in the, we moved him from there into Downtown Disney, where he's been an AGM, Assistant General Manager, and so he's going to be moving up here. Okay, thank you. Mr. DeLuca, Attorney DeLuca, appreciate your efforts in putting together this report for the board. Could you summarize your report? I wouldn't want to take the hour and a half it took me to read it twice.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I'm delighted to be here to offer whatever assistance that I can as to this licensing matter, which has a bunch of different layers to it, and understandably, has become a little bit complicated. Very happy to be retained, special counsel to your board on this matter. My law firm, Murphy, Hess, Chume, and Lahane, represents 10 different municipalities, most of which have the same characters as the town of Foxborough, where very experienced with alcohol licensing in each one of those municipalities. Though it's clear that this is a very unique situation that you have in Foxborough with a facility, a complex such as Gillette Stadium and Patriot Place, which presents special challenges to your board relative to alcohol licensing. And while you've heard what is really just a part of the alcohol licensing request tonight, specifically the transfer of a license, an existing license, to a new facility, a new location, a new venue, put to a new purpose, that's really only one of the issues that you have before you. And as I have given you a comprehensive report on both the transfer issue and the upcoming alteration of premises request that's being made, it's important to, at this moment, consider the merits of the transfer. That's what's before you. And I should also advise the chairman that there was considerable public comment that was brought forward earlier in this meeting. You should, by way of either a voter or a recommendation from the chair, to incorporate those comments into this hearing, since this hearing opened after those comments were made. It's important, for the matter of the record, that you incorporate those comments into this hearing.
I appreciate that. I was going to hold the public off from speaking to the public hearing started, but then sometimes...
It got rolling, and that's perfectly understandable. I just want, as a matter, of course, make sure that it gets noted in the record that those comments are all incorporated in the context of these hearings.
Okay, great.
Okay, so what you have before you is the request for a transfer. This is not unusual in any municipality. Transfers happen when Restaurant A maybe goes out of business, or is bought, or is somehow moved along the process, and there's a request that the license be used or utilized in a different location for a different purpose. Your board, as the law requires, is entirely capable of judging the merits of that request as against what you consider to be the public need or the public good. You should be interested in exactly what the size and operation of that venue would be, the amount of alcohol as to food service, and what those percentages might be, the number of people, the capacity, the number of licenses that you have already issued, a concentration in one area or another. Those are all relevant concerns when you talk about a transfer of a license to a new location. I know that there was a legislative grant of several licenses to the Patriot Place. Those have all been used. This is a transfer from an existing license that presently stands... an existing license that presently stands on the premises of the Patriot Gillette Stadium Complex, as I understand it, it's a request from what we know colloquially as the practice fields in the Dana Farber to the, to this proposed venue of Splitsville, and it's simply because there's a, a shortage, if you will, of available licenses, that's not the responsibility of your board to remedy and resolve, that's a matter for the public to take up at a public, at a, at a town meeting and ultimately the legislature to determine the number of licenses that you have available, there is a, a need for you at this point to simply consider the merits of this proposal as against the character of your community, that is for certain from all of the cases that I've reviewed and provided to you in, in the brief, in the appendix of cases. There is one thing that is for certain, and that is that you are charged to listen to all of the evidence, to make a reasoned decision based upon your responsibility as, as selectman, and to not act arbitrary and capriciously, that's the standard in the law, and my advice to you in that respect is to listen to all of the evidence and make a decision based on the evidence, you've heard considerable testimony from members of the public as well as from the applicant, all of which you should consider in making your decision relative to the transfer and the transfer alone, sometime later in this, in this meeting we'll have another consideration which is the alteration of permit, which obviously is necessary to free up the, the license that's proposed for this location, but for the moment, I, my advice would be to, to just concentrate on the, the transfer and, and whether or not you feel it's in the best interest of the community, as supported by the evidence that you have at this hearing.
Well said, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Olirian, you here? I think somebody's going to have to accommodate Chief Olirian.
I did.
Thank you, chief, appreciate it, could you give the board a view of your experiences in Florida and then at, in Boston, and anything else you'd like to add?
Okay, thank you, sir, as I did submit a report, Ms. Herman, earlier this afternoon, which hopefully we've had an opportunity to look at, I had an opportunity to travel with Brian Early to view the operation of Splitsville at the Orlando location, met with the gentleman, I was very impressed by the visualization of the retro look that they had and the dynamic of having the lanes spread throughout the facility as opposed to the typical bowling alley that we probably all grew up with in this area, they have a firm grasp based on the documents that I reviewed about enhanced alcohol service with an emphasis on training staff to both identify underage drinkers as well as those that are, have already been over-beveraged, and so it appears that, that component was very well run in terms of what my observations were, at some later time I found that Mr. Olirian's was a partner in this event, and where he was working and managing Howl at the Moon, I thought it would be prudent for me to also do a site visit, which I did on Friday, I met Paul there, I had met him earlier, he and Jim Staples had come in to explain the work that they were doing in preparation for coming to our community, I've known Jim for several years, he's done trainings for the department, for our liquor licensees in the community, and I know of his work in the field for at least a decade, certainly seeing Howl at the Moon is a different experience, coming from a fairly suburban quiet community, the line, as I say, was forming even before eight o'clock in the evening, but it's very well managed, which is, I think, a crucial element, if you have people waiting in line to get into a facility, you want to have staff on duty, which I observe, to be very competent in interacting with the crowd in a positive fashion, entering the facility, I think I got a pass just because of my elderly parents, and I was with the manager, they didn't think to card me, however, every other person in that line upon reaching, as you go in the door, a small flight of stairs is a central point where people are carded, and they do have the up-to-date technology to verify that those pieces of identification that are submitted are true documents, so they make a real effort that the people entering the facility, the music, although loud, was certainly no louder inside the facility than at some of the other locations we have currently within the community, I did meet with the detective sergeant, that is the liquor control agent for that district in Boston, he explained some of the violations that had occurred, and because of their capability that Boston has at Foxborough is slightly smaller, doesn't have some of those options, explained their inspection process, it's very detailed, very to the point, and that the operators can get written up for things they have no control over, one example given for Howl at the Moon was someone's cellphone was stolen, so a police report was made, the business was written up for the theft caused by another patron, now they didn't receive a penalty per se because right away the operation had contacted the police when they were made aware of it, they provided videotape of the interior to assist the police with the investigation, and those are the key things that Boston looks at, are they telling us about problems, are they helping us resolve investigations, and the detective sergeant that is in there frequently, as our other Boston inspectors, gave a thumbs up to the operation that they were seeing, I did contact Dedham, I think I had made mention earlier that I had spoken with the chief about a bowling concept, a competitor, as you will, that they operate there, the Dedham chief said that they have not had any particular issues with the operation, most of the liquor licensees, there were eight actually at Legacy Place, I did a follow-up, and most of those are primarily restaurant-type operations with limited or no entertainment attachments to it, in terms of community impact, I think our building commissioner had indicated on his early assessment a slightly lower occupancy capability than was mentioned just at the table, approximately 660 people, and the only issue that I, I think it's not going to cause a problem for the department, but we have to look more strategically, right now we have detail officers at a variety of locations on Patriot Place, but we don't have a cohesive linchpin of somebody both monitoring those details and managing events real time in a comprehensive fashion, so if indeed the license is issued here, I'll be meeting with Brian Early just to discuss some enhancements that we have to make in order to coordinate enforcement and inspection, another element is that there were some minor issues that came up with Patriot Place in terms of accessibility for cruisers that are required to go up there in response to other incidents, not just necessarily at one of the liquor establishments at night, but other incidents, so as to make it a quicker arrival time using whether it's Putnam Pathway or some other methodology, so some of those minor inconsistencies have to be worked on, and certainly if the license is issued, I'd be working with the management team here and with their consultants to make sure that it is properly run to reduce the risk of harm from alcohol service.
Thank you, and if you could stay up in the front, because I'm sure the board's going to start asking questions and the general public now, I wouldn't want to have to keep scampering back from the back, James, I'll open it up with you, questions for anybody?
I've got comments, no specific, let me back up, I, when I saw this application come in, I had a ton of questions, and to Mr. Attorney DeLuca's point, what it comes down to is considering this proposal against the character of the community, I think that's what we're all here to kind of look at, I have some concerns and I'll probably end on that, but I first wanted to say thank you to the Kraft Group for coming here tonight with, I think, a group that exceeded my expectations on your presentation, your management style in putting a, a presentation together that puts a lot of detail to a package that was somewhat hard to get the details because this is a legal document, so I appreciate that, I received a lot of calls over the last couple of weeks from people, you know, probably prodded to call the selectmen to, to kind of ask us our opinion, and so my, what I said to just about everybody, including, you know, state reps and, and people on the community, was I was going to hold off on any comment until I got the presentation because what I read in the paper, what I could find on the internet from going to Splitsville in, in Florida on the internet, I just had more questions, and you guys did a nice job on, on answering them, I thought the citizen's input kind of summed her up, and I can use her name because she said it, but Mary Smith, who I've known for a number of years, has strong ties to the community as a, as a parent, as a teacher, as somebody that works in the recreation and is involved in law enforcement through her family, so someone like that is what I was looking to hear, and, and I reached out to a lot of people, and I heard very strongly that this is something that most people just thought of as a bowling alley, and I think they were very excited about a bowling alley, when it put into context with, there's another component to it, it was a little bit of hesitation, but I think it, it's kind of a hybrid, and, and some people had talked about this, that it's different age groups during the day, you bring in pedestrians and, and people that typically wouldn't go in there to fill up the space, and at night it's a different venue, so all different ages, so it's something that I think would fit in here very nice, and quite frankly, I'm excited to see it, again, I do have some concerns about the, the liquor license, and I'm sure we can get to that, I did reach out to Pass Selectmen that were dealing with the 12 liquor licenses and, and that whole process years ago to get a better understanding of how many we have and what that process was, and again, we can talk about that in a little bit, but I think overall, I'm very excited for this concept as a, you know, as a parent and as friends, I could see myself using it, and I think it would fit very well into the concept that Foxborough somewhat voted on this back in 2000 and 2000, I'm sorry, 2007, '08, that this area of Route One, because of the liquor licenses and, and all the groups that studied it, it was an entertainment destination, and I think this fits into what our goal was at that time, with the Kraft Group's goal, I came in here kind of asking two questions of myself, one, I wanted to hear from Attorney DeLuca, part of those questions you haven't answered yet is, you know, we've got three licenses that were over the stadium, one went to a Japanese restaurant, two remaining, now one is going to go here, so those questions, I think we have to figure out on phase two, so it's the chicken and the egg what comes first, so if we put that aside, the other questions I wanted answered, I had not heard from Chief Olirian, who went out to Florida, who went into Boston, who's been dealing this with, you know, much longer than I have obviously, and I did not hear any unexpected apprehension, other than that we have to service this somehow with the police and fire and, and emergency, so again, we can talk about that, but I, I probably spoke too long, but I think my general comfort level is a lot better after hearing the presentation and hearing the management and the history and of how this came together than I had a week ago, and I appreciate that, so I'll hold off the rest for now, thank you.
Thank you, James, Jenny?
Thank you very much for coming before us and making your presentation, looking at the, the application, I did a lot of research on, on websites, I hit, I recognize Mr. Gibson very well, I've listened to your, to, to your comments on, on, on the videos and everything, and I've seen the Splitsville, and I'm, I am impressed with, I am impressed with Splitsville as a, as a unique deluxe bowling venue, I am impressed with that, however, I'm really concerned about the introduction of the Howl at the Moon concept, because to me, that seems like oil and water, the Splitsville, the bowling, it was, from what I saw on the website, it was come down, have a real nice experience, kick back, enjoy it, you know, quiet, you know, have a good time, and then I go on the Howl at the Moon website, and it's, it's totally different, it's large drinks, four-straw drinks, Joll shots, it just seemed like it didn't really, it doesn't really go with the family bowling venue that Splitsville is, is pushing, and I noticed that you didn't really speak too much about Howl at the Moon, you spoke a lot about Splitsville, but really what you're, it's almost like, it's almost like if we grant one license, we're actually licensing two separate concepts in one area, and I'm really concerned about the Howl at the Moon, we have had, if you look at the Foxborough Reporter, every week on the police blotter, what you get is, is reports from, we have another big venue, how, to me, a Howl at the Moon type place called Toby Keith, and we have, we are constantly getting reports in the paper about problems up there, I don't think you'll have a problem with Splitsville, you know, I really don't, I think it's really nice, but I am really, really concerned about the Howl at the Moon.
Thank you, can you let it?
Yep.
Okay, Paul, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I mean, and I understand, but this, I mean, Howl at the Moon operates in, you know, 14 cities and two cruise ships and, and some urban markets, this is, won't be a typical Howl at the Moon, this is effectively just the entertainment component, you know, the, the live music, we, we take, the, the core of what Howl does is the entertainment, and it's a very serious thing, we, we employ over 100 entertainers nationally, in Boston we have seven that came out of Berkeley, their salary, their 401K, their health benefits, their, this is their careers, and that's the core of what separates Howl from any other, even, you know, any other entertainment source, and so what we're just trying to do is we're trying to take that entertainment component of Howl and bring it out here as a, as, as something to tell, help provide, something that doesn't, we don't think really exists within even a Splitsville, anywhere within a Splitsville, Splitsville does live entertainment in a lot of their locations, I think Chief Olirian witnessed that, this is just an enhanced version, I would say a higher quality of entertainment than what Splitsville currently does, and that's what gets Splitsville folks excited, is you can combine our entertainment with their concept, and so when we look at that, that, you know, 11:00 or whenever we open, 10:00 in the morning until 1:00 in the morning business, you know, we can provide something that's a little bit more appealing to, to an adult crowd, you know, I don't think from a control perspective, I don't think from a liability perspective, it's going to be run or it's going to be any different than a Splitsville in, in Tampa or Disney or anything like that, it's just when you walk in that room and a little bit later at night, you'll have a little bit higher quality entertainment than currently exists in any of their other locations, and that, that's all.
Well, just, the, one of the, the gentleman that came forward, one of the last gentlemen who spoke about, he welcomed Splitsville, and then he kind of said, but Howl, I, I saw that Howl at the Moon was in the newspaper, and that's not, I mean, he was almost saying what I was saying, that Splitsville's nice, it's great bowling, but Howl at the Moon, I don't think so, he, he said that, and he was one of the people who came in, in support of Splitsville, so I don't think it's just me.
Well, and just to add to...
Mark, you're talking in the mic, I get, no, you can go to the mic, I just, I'll get yelled at by...
Just, just to add to what, what Paul said, and if you use Disney as an example, we do do live entertainment, we do do, we'll do a DJ two or three nights a week, and again, you used the word quiet, it was not a, not a word I... And again, you used the word quiet, it was not a word I would generally...an adjective I generally use is Splitsville. I mean, you have the pin noise, you've got...even our background music, we run it all through a program, an MP3. So, you want it to be lively and up-tempo. The whole process is, again, to encourage interaction, socialization. We won't do...we won't do the 84-ounce bucket drinks, we won't do Jell-O shots. You really are taking, and as Paul spoke to it, a very proprietary, controlled entertainment, professional entertainment component to drive two, potentially three nights a week, and primarily from nine to one. And it's, as you can see by Brian, by Brian's head, you know, it's in here. Customers can kinda self-select. I mean, it'll be a little louder, obviously, on the front side of the main bar towards the stage when a house shows on, but you're only talking about two, possibly three nights out of the seven nights. You're open 11:00 in the morning, going to one. So, it's not, as someone said earlier, the tail wagging the dog. If you choose to go away from the live entertainment, you've got the dining, the other eight lanes, which are raised up either 17 or 30...17 or 29 inches. So, you also have...you have a change of elevation, you've got a separation of distance, and, you know, you've got more than 100 feet of storefront. So, again, it'll be a piece at some time that you can either choose to consume or move away from, but it won't dominate the 20,000 square feet. I think that the square footage of downtown Boston is probably 3,500 square feet.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven square feet.
It's kinda like...
It's a much different...as Paul said, you're taking the entertainment, which is, again, a very professional proprietary product, putting it on a stage, but you're putting it in context of 12 bowling lanes, all that activity and noise, all the interaction, all the bowling and dining. And I bet, you know, we're doing over $6.5 million, $7 million dollars of food in downtown Disney. I don't think Howl does that entire system. So, it's just that the contexts are completely different from which this entertainment will be presented.
Okay. Jeanne, you have one more second?
Just have one more question.
I know you do, but I need to go...I'm not gonna move on from you. I just wanna make sure that the MPSLC doesn't mind that I have not opened the other public hearing. This has been a very involved conversation, and we're supposed to open the public hearing at 7:40. Is there any objection to us to holding out that public hearing?
No, no objection.
Seeing none. Okay, thank you. Jeanne, go ahead.
Okay. Well, Mr. Gibson, you just said that you won't be serving the signature Howl at the Moon drinks, you know, the Jell-O shots, the Bones, the thing. Then why are you calling it Howl at the Moon?
We're not...we're calling it Splitsville.
Yeah, but I mean, Howl at the Moon has a recognition of the entertainment. I mean, the big buckets are ancillary, they're more marketing...the real core of what that business is, is the entertainment. I mean, and I think the chief was in to witness it. We appeal to a wide demographic. I had a 70th birthday party in there the other night. Our average...our average age demographic is 25 to 45, you know, and it's because of the entertainment. And so, when you think of a Howl at the Moon, yeah, maybe some people will think about, oh, that's the bucket with the straws, which we won't be doing out here. But I think the majority of people will think about how great the entertainment is, you know. To give you a color, this is not, you know, a band we bring in. These are employees. They play three instruments minimum. At any given time, they know 7,000 songs on a stage from memory, and they can play it on three separate instruments and sing it. These are very experienced, high-quality entertainers. And I think that is the thing that's at the core of what Howl is. And so, when we tell somebody that Howl at the Moon will be performing, or Howl at the Moon will be at Splitsville Patriot Place, I think that's what we want people to think about. We want people to think about, wow, I can go there, and the music is really terrific. I can go and get a...someone said to me, like, "Go listen to Bruce Springsteen song like it's Bruce, and the next day, I can get up and go with my son to go bowling." And that is the core of what we're trying to put together here. And it's not, you know, maybe everything that you're envisioning ahead in terms of the downside. And that is why it's important, from our perspective, you know, we're investing four and a half million dollars as well here. It's important, from our perspective, as that third leg of the stool between bowling, food, and entertainment, that we have the best form of entertainment we can for those people who choose to consume.
So, basically, the people that you contract for Howl at the Moon, we will also be contracting to do the venues at Splitsville.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there are employees.
So, that's your pile of pie, your investment.
Yeah, there'll be...there are employees.
Okay.
If I could just say something...
One more second, please, Jeanne.
No, but it still will be called Howl at the Moon at Splitsville? Is that what it's gonna be?
Basically, Howl at the Moon Stage in Splitsville. Splitsville's gonna be the concept, and Howl at the Moon will be the stage, because it's only gonna be on that part of the entertainment, only be on two to three nights a week.
But we wanna be able to use the brand, because we think the brand...I mean, it quite candidly, on a Friday and Saturday night, if you walk into our place in downtown Boston, a lot of...I'm sorry, a lot of the people are coming from the suburbs into our concept. And within the greater Boston area, there's a large brand recognition for Howl from a wide range of age demographics. And so, we wanna be able to attract those people to Patriot Place. We think the Howl at the Moon show here is a key differentiator from, quite candidly, from Legacy Place. And we wanna take those people away from Legacy Place and bring them down here, because we have a brand and a product and something that people recognize that is different. And I think that's one of the key components to this business plan. So, we do wanna use the brand, and we do want people to think, okay, I can go to see a Howl show at Patriot Place. Not, I wanna go get a drink, a big bucket of whatever, I wanna go see the Howl show. That's the important part of what we're doing.
So, you're saying that you won't have the big buckets at all?
No, ma'am. It's not...I mean, it's quite...
The Bones and the...
It's not permitted by your liquor eggs anyhow, as I understand them.
Jeanne, you okay?
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, you know, we looked at not just the Howl show in Boston in terms of determining that this was something that we would be very happy with at Patriot Place. The Howl shows across the country, in fact, a new show just opened up in Philadelphia, and it was featured on some, I think, the NBC Network.
Fox.
It was a Fox network. And when you see the caliber and the talent of these performers, that's what we were looking for. Whatever happens, and frankly, what happens in Boston Howl, what happens in Philadelphia or some of the other cities, but it was the entertainment piece. And there's gonna be other pieces of entertainment that are part of the Splitsville concept. It's not just Howl. But it is, you know, it truly was part of this decision we made, that we wanted the best. Obviously, you know my track record of being very vigilant about the alcohol service. We've gone through that from last March to August, and I can continue to update that, working closely with the chief on some of the, you know, the protocols we've made. And these guys know how challenging I'm going to be as their landlord for that. And they've well outweighed, you know, and proved to me what they can do and have done in both and all of their venues. But, you know, the Howl concept, as Paul said, what attracted to us is the quality of entertainment, which we feel is truly the differentiator and makes that destination to Patriot Place very special.
Okay, thank you. Jeanne, you also?
Mm-hmm.
Lorraine? You wanna go, you next, or John?
I'll go, John.
I'll go. I'll tee it up. You know, going back to what Jim said, my only concern is the impact on our public safety infrastructure. We're a small town, you know, infrastructure is finite, unlike Boston, which, you know, has a lot more police officers. And Ed, you had said that in your discussions, that if this license were to be approved, that you would work it out, work out a plan of how you would absorb this amount of patrons in town in your staff. And I'd like to know if you have any thoughts on that. I'd like to know about that ahead of time, rather than, you know, post-decision.
Well, you know, certainly, you know, we have officers working details at different facilities due to the crowd size. Sometimes, it's the vendor themselves that have requested it, just due to the nature of the business and concern in our environment now about security issues. But we haven't had a cohesive linchpin on-site, making command decisions and doing inspections on a regular basis. We are not set up for doing that. And I'll certainly, whether or not, no matter what happens tonight, be looking to fill the 35th position on the department to make sure that we expand our capability in any event. But I think it's a discussion that if indeed we're having an additional liquor establishment, that we really have to have a cohesive element and the capability to move resources if additional resources are needed. And the Patriot Place group does have, you know, transportation available that they're paying for now, but that's only one element of it. We have to upgrade our inspection capability and onsite command-level structure. So, decisions about the use of resources on the site can be done on a more formalized basis, as opposed to ad hoc each individual detail operating uniquely.
I don't...you may not know this number, but at any given time, say on a Saturday night, when all the establishments are, you know, mostly occupied, how many folks combined in that one general area?
It varies between eight and 12, depending on the events that are taking place.
Eight and 12,000 people?
No.
Detail offices.
Oh, no. I'm asking, do you know the number of potential people that could be at all the establishments?
Well, if we have capacity at all the eating establishments, although I've seen numbers above the theater, the actual areas where alcohol are served at both the hotel and the theater group are lower than their actual occupancy, but upwards of 4,000 to 5,000 people can be on the grounds at the various restaurants and entertainment areas.
And staffing, just so folks at home can know, what's your general staffing level on a weekend, apart from details?
Oh, apart from details, we have a shift supervisor and three district cars.
So, four police officers?
Four officers available.
Okay. And they would naturally respond if there was an incident at the Patriot Place?
Well, the initial car response would be the wagon vehicle that is on the property to support the details, because usually, they're the ones that have discovered some type of incident. But then, the north car would also be dispatched, because that's within the zone, he's responsible... or that officer is responsible for handling calls along the Route One corridor.
And how is the rest of the town covered?
We have three cars. One is north, one is south, one is east.
Okay.
Poor west people. You got nobody.
Do we have any... I'm in the south. It's all yours, Lorraine.
Hold on. So, Edward, you're hinting towards something, I think, that you need to fill that 35th position for the police department sometime in the future to be able...
No, within the next fiscal period, Mr. Solomon.
Okay. I mean, I concur. We're supposed to be up a little bit more on that, but we'll work together to try and get that to come to fruition. So, to answer your question from the...Lorraine?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Very informative and really a high-class-looking operation. Appreciate that. Couple of questions for you before I ask Ed some questions. So, you mentioned having an entertainment venue two, three nights a week. So, you're talking Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
That's what we're thinking right now, yes.
So, what would your hours of operation be for the other nights?
We're opening for lunch every day, so we open up at 11:00 AM every day. And we'd actually talked about last night about closing times, you know, about, you know, it's...I think right now, we'd probably stay open till 1:00, because there's a number of events out there that go on, and we wanna make sure we're accommodating people coming out of those events. But we'd have to evaluate that, if that makes sense. The business may not support that. With this venue, there's a lot of staffing required, between kitchen people, host people, that sort of thing. So, opening up at 11:00 every day, and, you know, one on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, definitely, but we're not sure about the balance of the week.
I think most places up there are vacated by 10 to 11. It's typical.
Yeah. And we have to see how that...and we think with our use on those off-nights, because we actually have an activity for people to do, there may be a chance that people who are at the hotel may actually find our venue more appealing than any of the other ones down there. So, we maybe will stay open and accommodate that group, but we have to see how that goes. We're not sure.
So, would you have a different type of entertainment on those evenings?
We'd probably just have background music.
Background music?
Yeah, type of thing.
Okay.
You can talk.
Let me go to Ed. All right.
Edward, could you please come forward again?
So, Ed, I was going through your report, and appreciate that you put this together for us. Just wanted to get out there a little bit of information about the staffing and the statistics that Ed reported to us. Back in 2006, when we were working to develop the special legislation for the initial 12 liquor licenses, we had 26 full-time equivalents. Is that correct? Or 27?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven? Okay. All right. And with the implementation of Patriot Place, that increased to 31 officers shortly thereafter. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And 31 officers is the level of staffing that you had in 2002, correct?
Yes, it is.
And the incidents, both calls for service and officer-initiated, in 2002 was 11,566 incidents. That's from the records.
That's right. That's from my data search.
Right. So, we fast-forward, 2002 with 11,566 incidents, 31 FTEs. Today, we're at 34 FTEs, so we have three more FTEs. And we're running, except for one bump in 2012, it looks like we're running around 18,643 incidents.
Correct.
Okay. Would you say that that's made your department significantly more busy?
Certainly, it's had an impact, both on the calls for service, which are direct calls from citizens, businesses, and also the quality of people that I have working for me, that we do a lot of self-initiated interaction that results in officer activity.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's a combination. Yes, we are busier. There has been, as was projected, additional traffic through the community because of opportunities at Patriot Place that didn't exist, except empty parking lots prior to 2006, 2007. So, we have more general activity throughout the town, as we've become more of an economically developed community, as opposed to a bedroom community that Foxborough primarily was with the collapse of the Foxborough Company.
I mean, if I could follow up on that while I get on my thought. Edward, all those calls, the 18,000-plus, does that include game days? Does that include concerts, other big venues that come to town?
Actually, Mark, what we do for special events, we have one call for that particular event. And all the activity that takes place in that event is logged within the event itself. We're not saying that every single incident at a major event is a separate call, because that would skew...
That's exactly why I'm asking the question, to make a clarification, yeah.
...the operation that's primarily detail-driven. So, one of the types of calls that, you know, I see when I'm doing the data search of those different fiscal years, that will call...have it...it's called stadium event, event log. That's the nature of the call. So, when I start an event, like I did for the football game this past week, I'll inform the dispatcher to start the call for today's event, you know, the time that I call it. And then, when we finish at the end of that event, then I call the stop time as to when all information for that event ends.
Okay, great. Now, I just wanted to make sure the numbers were not, you know, skewed, like you said. And with those other...to ask the second follow-up question, to what relation are those to car break-ins? I know you don't have the number off the top of your head, but are they more related towards the town, or are they more related towards that general area? Because I know we've had a great increase in break-ins and burglaries and cars, and...so, do you have any idea?
Well, I believe that when Mr. Murphy and Mr. Early was making a presentation, they were looking at data that both the board and they had requested about specific to Patriot Place, in terms of the number of calls for service within that particular district. And I believe I calculated approximately 900. I know that the COF report that a lot of decision-making was based on might have been a different figure, plus or minus, but we do track within Patriot Place being a separate geographic area because of the complexity of the business operations there.
If I could just add real quick, the chief is right. The number that was provided in the March presentation, which was coordinated with... The number that was provided in the March presentation, which was coordinated with the chief's information, was 895 calls during 2012. And just to, for the record, the Cough report from 2006 projected the number of calls related to Patriot Place to be 1,200 calls per year, which resulted in some of the funding that the Kraft Group put together for public service, which has been funded, over 1.4 million in 2007, 2008 for public service, safety, as well as $140,000 per year since 2008, again, towards the public safety issues related to essentially 1,200 estimated calls there. And I can report, as I did in August, as of the end of September, we're down 64% on the number of calls and incidents, police-related calls to Patriot Place non-event day.
Thank you.
So out of the 18,000, less than 1,000 is designated to Patriots Place and 17,000 are basically over the geographics of the rest of the town?
Correct. If, you know, I did not do a call for the current year that we're in, but certainly the 2012 figure of 900 of 18,000, I think is approximately 5%.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So really, I think one of the things that impressed me about this information is that there has been a dramatic increase in the number of calls since 2002 with that 31 staffing requirement back then. And so here we are with 34, three more FTEs dealing with the bulk of this impact happening town-wide. And so now we're about to have another venue about to open up, which is great to hear about Saga, with another occupancy level of about 300 there. And now we have another occupancy level of about 800 to 900, which is, you know, certainly as much, if not maybe a little more than Toby Keith's, probably about the same.
Toby Keith's 1,200, I believe.
So it's like adding another Toby Keith's is about to happen to us if this were to be approved.
Size venue of Toby Keith.
Size venue, yes.
And you combine them both, I think the actual numbers that Mr. Casper supplied is 666 according to your statement.
Correct.
And then if you add the 250 from the Saga, let's call it 900.
Okay. But they're saying that it's 800 to 900. So we don't have any definite, you know, plans that Bill can accurately project.
My bill of commission is really good, so you're around 660.
Right.
You know, certainly any additional events that provide liquor, I was doing, you know, some research myself about alcohol density. And one of the issues is you have to take a look at each establishment and what their core business is. The addition of a Japanese steakhouse, that's our primary restaurant functionality, has less of an impact than something that provides entertainment. They have different missions. So Saga, yes, will add to the variable about people coming. And what my staff sees, quite frankly, are people not just going to a particular restaurant, theater, showcase live, but then they will make a subsequent trip to some other place on-site, whether a follow-up, a social gathering with some of the people they were with, or dinner after a movie, dinner before a movie, someplace on the site. So that is happening. And certainly the impact of the hotel, you know, you have customers that are there from across the world that are using, not necessarily the hotel restaurant, because now they have multiple options.
Thank you. Okay, so then, I'm sorry, Ed, I'm not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So would you, you wouldn't expect there would be any decrease in the number of times that were left with the north part of town uncovered by a car, should there be a second incident that they're called to?
Well, that could happen.
Anytime.
At any time, whether it's at Patriot Place.
Or any other place.
At Best Value, the motels along the Route One corridor, traffic crashes on Beach Street. Any place that we have, you have to shift your resources to where the call is. You know, if we have an incident, as we did at one of the motels the other day, that tied up not just the north car, but we had to pull the east car up to support his operation as well as the shift sergeant. So those things happen in a real-time basis. And we're just adjusting the resources because we don't have the capacity that we can always leave the three cars in place in those districts and still have another crew handling the calls for service.
Okay. Can I switch to the 24J report?
Yes.
Okay. Ed has provided us with information on the 24J report. Ed, would you explain? I just have a note here. It says that the 24J represents cases that concluded in a guilty finding for OUI for our town. Is that correct?
Correct. I had a conversation with Ted Mahoney, the chief investigator. These are requirements when a person has been charged with and operating under the influence of alcohol and the case is concluded with a finding of, continued without a finding or guilty, that the person is asked where they had their last alcoholic beverage before being brought in. I believe, and I don't have it right in front of me, I think there were 38.
It was 38, yeah.
Incidents that in trials, that took place in 2012 with a finding that people named alcohol establishments within the town of Foxborough.
Okay. And I think, again, just for everyone's information, the interesting fact that you pointed out was that Foxborough, at that rate of 38 cases in that year, falls into the same category as Springfield, Lowell, Plymouth, Chicopee, and Peebody. Springfield with a population of 153,000, Lowell 106,000, Plymouth 56,000, Chicopee 55,000, Peebody 51,000, Foxborough 16,865. So could you comment on that?
Well, you know, certainly we are a suburban community with no access to public transportation. People that come to Foxborough now, it's no longer, again, a bedroom community. So we have more people coming from out of the area that are here. So I don't have a clue per se how many people are here. We know, for example, a million just to see events at Gillette Stadium. But it does put us in a different position that a normal community our size would not necessarily be.
Could I ask a question about that? I'm just understanding this line of commentary. These are assumed to be 38 incidents that occurred at the last location named by the individual who was arrested?
Yep.
During their court case? During their trial, correct?
I'm not sure if that's, I think that's the, at the time of arrest.
No, it's actually after the finding that the judge is required to ask the defendant.
So after their case, this is in the courtroom that this information comes out?
Right. But the case is concluded and the requirement under the law is the judge asks the person.
Sidebar or in trial?
No, the trial is over.
Yeah, so sidebar with the judge, you're saying?
Well, it's a public, continuing public notice. It's not part of the trial.
It's not when they're arrested?
No.
I believe, I believe that it was when they were arrested. But regardless, to what extent is that then followed up and proven as fact?
Well, let's go back a minute here because we're going to get off track. And I think we're going to move on from this because it says 38, I think that almost 38 last said was a place in Foxborough. There's a lot of other, this could be anywhere. So let's just move on from this. Let's just, I don't want to go any further with this.
I just wanted to, I did remember what my second question was because Ed reminded me. The percentage of alcohol to food sales from Hell at the Moon?
Well, Hell at the Moon is much more alcohol sales than food sales. It's probably in the 75% alcohol sales range. Spitzville is the exact opposite.
Or the exact opposite. You're 75%. We're 75% food bowling and non-alcoholic beverages. Could you take that picture down, please? By the way, those are hand-cut filet sliders and they are great.
Sort of speaks to the mitigating aspects of the footprint.
Lorraine, anything else? We can move on because I'm going to end this pretty shortly.
For now.
A question, if you mind? What are your Sunday hours? What are you anticipating your Sunday hours today?
11:00 AM till, you know, once again, not knowing the area, but my guess would probably be 11:00 to 11:00, 11:00 to 12:00. I'm not sure with game days if that would change. We actually do, at Disney, we actually do a breakfast bowl where we go out with like student youth groups during the summertime that we're working on. So we don't know if on the weekends during the summertime up here when the kids are out of school, we might actually do a breakfast bowl where you come in and you get a combination of breakfast and bowling as a part of a YMCA group or, you know, one of the recreation leagues around here. We just, we're not sure, but right now we're 11:00 AM open every day.
Sandra?
Okay, so that's without alcohol service, starting at 11:00 or 12:00?
Well, the town says 12:00, right? So if you wanted to start at 11:00 o'clock, you'd have to ask the board for special permission, which, just for the record, we only grant to our home Patriots games to start at 1:00 o'clock. So, I mean, you'll never see an 11:00 o'clock other than that, not with this board, I would think. I'm speaking for the board because I'm just going by our case that we've covered. Anything else, Sandra? All right, I'll bring it back to you, James.
Just a very quick question. And I understand Spitzville and I understand Hell at the Moon. When they're together, if a group comes in or, you know, pre-teens, 12, 13, and they're bowling and they're having dinner and it goes till 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock, are they asked to leave, put a bracelet on, can they interact with everyone else? I know if you go to, you know, the competitor in Dedham, there's certain protocol after a certain hour. How does that, how do you envision that working here in Foxborough with the youth transitioning into the evening?
Our overarching...
I was actually going to ask the same question, James. I was wondering if you segregated one part of the alleys for non-alcohol or...
We don't, we could. There's flexibility. We talked about a lot of options with, with people here in Orlando. Our overarching policy is it's 21 and over unless accompanied by an adult. So if you're in there bowling with your kids at 8:00, 9:00, when you naturally finish is when you would depart the establishment. So we don't, we don't, and Disney have an age restriction. And in Disney, you know, the tourist nature and all that, so you may see kids and families, you know, out as late as 10:30, 11:30 at night. And, you know, the day of the week is less critical there. It kind of spans all seven. At some point, I mean, we would open that policy at some point on a Friday and Saturday night at 10:00 o'clock or at some 10:30. It may make sense to restrict entry of under 21. We would work with the chief on that because number one goal is to control the establishment for underage and for over-serving. So, but to your particular example, no, when you finished, you would finish, you'd depart. We don't quite understand why the competitor goes to such a hard line early, but they do it in Orlando as well. We think it costs them a lot of family business stuff.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Good. Okay. So public hearing, anyone from the audience wish to speak on this matter? Please come to the mic, state your name, address, please.
Hi, my name's Stephanie McGowan. I live at 19 Rhodes Lane. I came in a little late, so excuse me if I repeat something that somebody had already mentioned. I would try not to do that if they had already brought it forward. Originally, I wanted to come in just to say that I have been to Spitzville and Tampa. We loved it, not with the kids, just my husband and I. We do have friends that live in Orlando who frequent often, love the Patriot Place. We have also been to Hell at the Moon. I don't drink at all, so alcohol was no reason why we were going there. It was strictly entertainment. I was excited Spitzville was coming, just always looking for something else to do with the kids in the area. And Patriot Place is building up. I do have a little boy with autism who loves to bowl. And I was excited to hear that you're willing to be, you know, with the community. Maybe we can get something going, that there's a time where people with, children with a disability could come in at a special time. They do that at some movie theaters, just because of things like the noise and stuff. So it seems like you guys are very family goal-oriented and willing to work with the family. The other reason why I wanted to speak was, no disrespect to Mr. Mortimer. I mean, I was one of those people who read the article in the paper and it seemed like it just came out with big drinks, alcohol, the suspensions. I've been a waitress and a bartender for 25 years. I've served lots of alcohol. It just, you know, and I was glad to hear you explain what some of the suspensions were because of being in the business. My husband worked in the business for a short time and his name was on a liquor license and he had a suspension. And how that works isn't, it's, just in the paper, it sounded like everything fell on your shoulders, which I know as the license holder, you're the one that comes forward. But it's about having responsible servers. And I think when, and I've worked places where there are, there have been people who have over-served or served minors. The place I work with now, I've been there for 15 years, 15 years we've never been caught serving somebody underage. And I think, but when it does happen, as long as you come forward and you say, well, what was the problem? Which it sounded like, I listened to how you, you know, you came forward and well, how can we make it better? So, and it's difficult because people come in with licenses from every state imaginable and, you know, and they hand you a license and you run to a book and you're looking in a book. And from what you said, you have equipment where you can tell if it is legit. But I bet you most people here could look at the book and look at a license and you say, that looks legit. So, you know, things happen. And when you've served millions of people over a 10-year period to have three, you know, I guess in the paper it sounded like you had these three suspensions. Serving millions and millions of people, three suspensions isn't really a high number. So I just kind of wanted to give my input of being a citizen in town. Of course, I'm concerned about what happens in this town. But I think if you have people who come in with a good plan, listening to Chief O'Leary, it sounds like, he sounds kind of for this with some stipulations of getting people together. And so anyhow, I just kind of wanted to come in and say that, just for most people reading in the paper, that article sounded like, you know, this was just a booze hall and that's all we were getting here. And if you work in the business and you work in a restaurant, like I said, I've been doing it for 25 years, sometimes things like this happen. But I think if you, if you want to bring a great place like Spitzville into town and great entertainment to draw the people and the fact this, you know, I mean, it's not that it's all about money, but it also is a lot of revenue for this town to have, to have that type of sales happening up there. And so anyhow, that was just my kind of little input of that it's not just, you know, people will come there to hear the entertainment and the fantastic music. And, you know, like I said, you know, my husband drinks very little. I don't drink at all. But we've been to both establishments and it wasn't about going to have something, an alcoholic beverage. It was about enjoying ourselves and we look forward to you guys coming and bringing our kids to this one. So it's my little two cents anyhow.
Thank you. Anybody else want to be heard from the public? I'll see you then. Take a motion, close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing at 8:50.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Any more questions from the board? Okay. You, you, you going?
I have a procedural question.
I was actually going to ask, but go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was wondering if we could take a three-minute recess so I could have a talk with you. Attorney DeLuca, and you, if you don't mind. Okay. Is Mr. Murphy available?
Sorry, I'll have a second.
Okay.
Step outside.
I wanted to know about continuing this hearings.
All right. We're going to take a five-minute recess and we'll be back at 9:55. Thank you.
8:55.
All right, 8:55. We get a glare off the clock. Well, it's been going on so long. All right.
You want to back on? Come on.
I don't see it on the TV. He says there's a five-second delay. All right, okay. Okay, thank you for your patience tonight. Me and Vice Chairman Brew, Attorney DeLuca, and other members of the craft group had a little sidebar conversation. This will, basically, getting back to the, when the twelve liquor licenses were given to Patriots Place as a one-time legislation, there was, and there's some discrepancy here, we don't know the exact figures, a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollar per license fee that was granted to the town, and I'm going to look for some guidance on these numbers. So by transferring these two licenses, one for another establishment, this one, I had a conversation with Mr. Murphy today, and he had said, maybe if that's something the town will consider, that they'd be obliged to do that. Whether or not he had the permission to do that or not, he was saying to me, and trying to make this exactly clear, that he would approach that, is what I should say. Attorney DeLuca, is this the conversation we just had sidebar?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
Well, only that, again, my advice to the board is that you've closed the public hearing, you have the, certainly the right and the opportunity to deliberate on the, on the matter. You could choose to deliberate now, or defer to some later time to do that. That's really the, the only matter where we are procedurally.
Okay, thank you. And the reason why we had this, I had this conversation with Mr. Murphy earlier is because he has a concern, and so does the board, I think I can sense that, some of this is about the public safety, not get up to staffing levels. This has nothing to do with the people in front of us at this point in time. Lorraine, is there anything you want to add to that?
I, I think, you know, we, we do have a discrepancy in the understanding about, you know, the value that was attributed to the twelve licenses as it was voted on at the town meeting. So, I think that's something that, you know, before we would talk about any type of mitigation, I think we, we would need to go and look back at that information to confirm, because to my recollection, it was more like fourteen million dollars for twelve licenses.
James?
Yeah, and I hadn't spoken to either one of you, but as I said at the beginning, I wanted to get an understanding, because it was twelve liquor licenses that we got from the legislation, and there was an additional three that came back from Sullivan or Schaefer Stadium that went to the stadium. Okay, so there's fifteen, and then there was a, an additional one that the town transferred over for Toby Keith, Toby Keith. So if you go back, and I wasn't at the board at the time, so I went back to two thousand and eight, and there was a hierarchy of needs, cash value list that was put together. And basically, you know, going back to the, to the mass law on liquor licenses, you can't ask an applicant to pay money, ten thousand, twenty, fifty for a license, because, but you can look at the mitigation necessary for the impacts of a liquor establishment. So, back in two thousand and eight, and it was chaired by Bob Hickey. Mark, your name is on there somewhere too.
Oh, is the...
So the Patriots Place Negotiating Committee was put together, Bob Hickey, Kevin Weinfeld, Neil Forrester, Andy Gale, or Randy Scollins, Mitch, John Mitchellmore, Bill Early.
And Bert Lane chaired by myself.
So it seems like they looked at, okay, there's twelve liquor licenses, what is, what is the impact going to be on the town? So the list that you put together was, you look at the police, okay, five patrol officers, one officer per shift, five shifts per week, there's a value of five-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand that was put on that. So you go down this list that you put together, fire department, six-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, one, one police cruiser, transponders, communicate, communication capabilities, cell holding area, consultant fees, transport vehicles, sidewalk, snow plowing, a pumper. So you add all these up, it comes out to one-point-four-two-eight million, and I think that's the number that you alluded to. So one-point-four million for those, to mitigate the impacts associated with twelve liquor licenses. So, and it, so Article eighteen that was voted on at the town meeting, there was a settlement schedule that the town voted to accept. Now, it wasn't exactly one-point-four, because there was something called total value of excess building permit fees. So, there was a discrepancy, or from my understanding, a disagreement on the building fees that the town charged on day one, and then when Patriots Place was coming, the building fees changed, so there was a discrepancy in that. So you add all that stuff up, and it came out to two-point-eight-two million. So year one, the Patriots Place, on the settlement schedule from town meeting, paid three-hundred thousand. On and before March two thousand and eight, they paid nine-sixty, and then each year, they paid a hundred-and-forty thousand, and this carries those twelve liquor licenses through year twelve. Okay, starting in two thousand and eight. So at year twelve, that payment stops. So I think that is, that is what was voted on for the twelve. Now, I'm not sure where a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand came, but if you, if you divide one-point-four million by twelve liquor licenses, you come up with a hundred-and-nineteen thousand. So someone could, someone can make the correlation, that one liquor license for the mitigation spread out through Chief O'Leary and, and all the impacts needed was a hundred-and-nineteen thousand. That four, that, I'm not sure the number you just came up with.
Fourteen million.
Fourteen million, probably had to do with, there's another component to this, of the sewer treatment plant in the billboards. Okay? So, you know, there's, there's no doubt in my mind that, you know, and I think you're hearing it, that the bowl, the Spitzville, I think people would be very, very excited, and there'd be no apprehension. It's the liquor component to it that is, that is probably the only reason that we're here tonight, because the bowling is by right, and you could go in. So I think the discussion is, is there an impact that has to be mitigated for that additional license being transferred over? Now, there's no number associated with that. Chief O'Leary indicated that, you know, that there's a plan in his head that he can pull things together and move it around, and I don't know what that value is, but I think that's the discussion, if there's mitigation to go towards, and I don't know how to put a value to that. If that, if that clears up, what?
I think it clears up exactly.
I don't know whether one-twenty-five is, but one-point-four.
Well, that was the number suggested to me by the craft group today.
Yep. Now, the other component, and again, we'll talk about it at the second part to this, that liquor license is not new. That liquor license is attached to an establishment that is already operating. So, we're not taking it from the other side of town and dropping it in. Whatever mitigation is increased from that, there's probably a decrease from whatever issues might have been at the playing field. So the net is, add a little mitigation, and maybe recognize that there's less mitigation needed for the other part. And quite honestly, I haven't heard of any issues over at the playing fields, the Dana Farber, and they do a lot of charity events there, they do practices, there's, I don't know how many events that you have per year, but I think that's going to be figured into it as a subtraction or an addition, I don't know. But that's where my head is right now with all of this.
Mm-hmm. John, anything to add?
No, but Jim, that's an entire, that's a different venue altogether, though. I mean, that's, that's a, you know, charity and social functions sort of ahead of a football game versus an entertainment venue. So, like, I'm with you, it would be difficult to, to, you know, put a value on mitigation at this point without further discussions with the chief.
Okay. So, basically, these gentlemen want to put a four-and-a-half million dollar investment into this town, or into Patriots Place. How many jobs, gentlemen?
We, we think somewhere between a hundred and a hundred-and-twenty-five.
Okay. Invest in the community, and they travel a long way. I think I've heard North Carolina, Florida, and you're local.
Thosely.
Awesome.
Some, some short.
All right. Before the board discuss any further, is there a reason why you wouldn't want to let us continue this for two weeks from tonight? Other than, I know it's inconveniencing, but it's...
I think from, from our perspective, we're actively spending money right now. We have architects that are working today, yesterday. If there's a chance that this doesn't happen, you know, we would look at that money we're spending. We have two more weeks of spending a fair amount of money to get ourselves in a position to start building, hopefully, once we're ready with the building part or anything like that. So I think that's probably the biggest thing, without getting an answer out of this board, is a concern for me. There's a lot of many...
Thank you. Just so I can put on the record and make sure people understand this clear, clearly, the idea of mitigation was not from me, it was brought up by the craft group. So I don't want anybody saying, what do you think, you're, you know, taking money, you're asking for money. I didn't ask for nothing. This was an idea that was sent to me. So I want to make that clear, especially for the media and the folks at home. John?
No, it's, just, just so everyone knows, we got this information, some got it on Friday, I get in from the West Coast, and I got it over the weekend, so there's a lot of information to digest. So this is, it's good to vet it, and it was a good, good public hearing, and the input from the chief was, was, was great. But the thing is, there's, there's still, in, I need time to digest it all. You know, if you're looking for a vote tonight, I'm not ready to do that.
Jim?
I mean, ask everybody how you feel, I mean... Well, and I keep alluding to, we've got a public hearing after that. Can I suggest we open up that hearing, we go through that process, we leave this open, we hear what that other process is, and then we collectively make a decision after, after that.
Pretty good suggestion. Lorraine?
I, I feel like I would need more time.
At this point in time?
At this point in time. I think, you know, opening up the public hearing, we have to do that. I don't know that we'll be able to even get through that this evening, so with, you know, the time constraints we have here.
Okay, I understand. All right, I mean, Jenny, sorry?
No, I just assumed delay, any action?
Continue?
Mm-hmm, continue.
Delay is a terrible word.
Okay, sorry. Continue?
Yeah, all right, so, I, I am one, I'm ready to move and vote on this, but I can see that's not what's going to happen. I think Jim's definitely, after hearing this next hearing, could possibly be ready to go. Is there any chance of that, John, after the next public hearing?
Well, these, these two issues in some way are linked, but in other ways are separate. And in my mind, they're separate.
Okay.
So, to me, honestly, it's a matter of, I haven't had a whole weekend to digest it all, and there's still other questions that I may want to talk to the chief, and I may want to talk to, to other folks, and some of the previous mitigation activity, I'd like to explore that a bit more to understand it.
Okay.
In other words, it's, in my mind, there's a few loose ends, that I think it would be irresponsible to move forward without understanding the rest of the picture.
Okay, well, in all fairness then, I'm going to do this much. Gentlemen, I'm not going to put you out two weeks, because I don't want to. I'd like to take action on this tonight, and we don't have a scheduled meeting for next week, but I will schedule one right now, for, on your behalf, if that's something you consider. In all fairness, and trying not to be King Solomon here, but two weeks is a lot, I know you've got money invested in one week. I was reluctant to do that, but if the board can make it, another meeting next week, because we have four public hearings in two weeks. So, I don't see how we can do that. Do you guys want to take a minute to think about it? I mean, we can go and...
Yeah, it's their travel schedule. We have to talk to the family back. Okay? Can we fly back up?
Mark, you're talking about next Tuesday night?
Yes. Yeah. Did that give you enough time, John?
Yeah, that's fine.
Jenny?
Yes.
James? I'm just looking though.
I, I have a work meeting on Tuesday, but I'm...
Well, we have a, we can't do it, well, we can't do it Monday, because we have town meeting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see, I'll do the best I can to...
Is there a specific time that would make it better for you, because we can do it earlier or later?
I've got an eight o'clock meeting in Boston.
Okay.
I'll, I'll...
What about five o'clock on Tuesday, next week?
Are you going to be in Boston?
No, he has to be there at eight.
At eight.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Jenny?
Will that give you enough time?
Let, let, let's schedule it for, I don't know if we have to schedule tonight for five. If I can move the meeting to somebody else, or do a different time, I'll certainly do that, and we can move it back to seven.
Appreciate your dedication.
I mean, I'm concerned, because I think this is a decision that five members had to make.
That's why...
So I would like to make the accommodation for you.
Well, that's why, that's why we're having this discussion. You know, everybody's concurred Tuesday is fine, it's just the time. So what we'll do is, I will, Jim will touch base with me, and I'll talk to Sandra, and I know we're at a high school, too, so five o'clock could be different, we don't even know if this room's available. So, we, there's a lot of complicated moving cogs here, so why don't we tentatively say, at this point in time, six o'clock next Tuesday?
So, Mark, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Can you do it on a Wednesday night? Are you available on Wednesday?
What's Wednesday at?
Because we have, um, we have meetings scheduled for Tuesday night, um, to go over the liquor violations. We have four of them scheduled already.
Okay, oh, so you have meetings set?
Well, yeah, Attorney DeLuca is going to be here at six-thirty on Tuesday, so if you could do it on a Wednesday, I don't have that one. Does that work for you?
Okay, let's...
Is that better for you, Jim?
I do it on the Monday, where we have town meetings, so that's not going to happen.
Well, advisory is done, so...
Yep.
Advisory, you've been meeting here?
Well, I don't know where they're meeting right now, but...
They're in McGinty.
Yeah, McGinty. So if they're not meeting, maybe we could meet, well, you want to meet here. You want to meet here?
Yeah, because of public...
All right, let me check.
All right.
I'll check.
We will be in touch with you.
Thank you.
You know, but I'm trying to accommodate.
Appreciate it very much, thank you.
So, it'll be Tuesday next week or Wednesday.
What's the easiest way? Who's the easiest contact?
Yeah, through, through, probably Dan Murphy, myself, but Dan has...
At this point, we have to make a motion to continue the public hearing to a certain time. I mean, the, the discussion, the...
Deliberation.
Deliberation, now the public hearing's been closed.
Right.
So we have to make a motion.
Right.
So it's kind of like, we have to make it to a date here. We can't just...
All right, so do it on Wednesday, and I'll find a place. It'll just be a question of where.
Wednesday at seven?
Does that work? Yeah, that's convenient.
Ladies and gentlemen, James?
I can't come on Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yep.
I have another job.
All right, Wednesday at seven, and we'll confirm the location at this point in time to be here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, seeing that's seven forty. John, if you could read the public news?
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay, John, could you read the public news?
Yep. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one thirty-eight, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, two thousand and thirteen, at seven forty PM, in the Foxborough High School Media Center, one-twenty South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, on application to alter the premise of an annual all-alcohol beverage restaurant license for NPS LLC, doing business as Gillette Stadium. One Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass, manager James J. Nolan, Jr. All interested persons are invited to attend the hearing submitted by the Board of Selectmen of Foxborough, Massachusetts.
Thank you, John. Okay. A lot of the time tonight, we just spent two hours exactly on the first public hearing. I thank you for your patience, and I'll open it up to you. Oh, Jim, whoever's taking the lead on this, and obviously, names and titles and all that for the record.[1687.82] Hey, John, could you read the public news?
Yep. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass Journal Law's Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, two thousand thirteen, at seven forty P.M. At the Foxborough High School Media Center, one twenty South Street, Foxborough, Massachusetts, on application to alter the premise of an annual all alcohol beverage restaurant license for NPS LLC doing business as Gillette Stadium. One Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass., manager James J. Nolan, Jr. All interested persons are invited to attend the hearing submitted by the Board of Selectmen, Foxborough, Massachusetts.
Thank you, John. Okay. Um, a lot of the time tonight, we just spent two hours exactly on the first public hearing. I thank you for your patience, um, and I'll open it up to you. Oh, Jim, whoever's taking the lead on this, and obviously names and titles and all that for the record.
I'll take the lead. I'm Jim Cobrey. I'm the General Counsel of NPS LLC. With me is our Special Liquor Counsel, Steve Miller, and our manager of the liquor license for NPS LLC, Jim Nolan. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
I, I guess I'll start just briefly. Steven Miller, McDermott Co. and Miller, uh, one thirty-one Oliver Street in Boston. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members, for, uh, um, all the time you put in. Where, uh, this, uh, application is, is certainly tied to the, uh, previous one. The Kraft Group, uh, obviously is supporting, um, the, uh, transfer of the license held by Foxborough Realty Associates to, uh, Splitsville. And your deliberations and your, your, uh, uh, final, uh, discussion and decision on that would have, um, be required to be in the positive before we could even, um, could even vote on this, since there can't be two licenses on the same premises at the same time. And we're seeking, if, if in fact, the license is approved to go to Splitsville, we're thi- seeking to, uh, take the, um, described premises, which would be the, uh, Field House, the Dana Fava Field House, and, um, amend the description of the license held by NPS LLC, DBA Gillette Stadium, to include the Field House into the stadium license. Just briefly, and, and Jim can show you, um, the area, but there certainly wouldn't be a public safety concern, uh, because it's already licensed premises. It's already within the, um, within the fenced-in area. The, it would be the same security that currently exists. It would be the same entrance, egress, access, and control. The use is not changing, would be exactly as it is now. It would, um, without speaking for the transfer, and I know you have other issues. It would take a license that, um, is utilized on a limited basis and allow it to be used on a, on a more full basis. But the, um, our use, um, of the stadium license, um, by adding to this, this, uh, premise to this area would not in any way change exactly what we're doing now. I know, um, I asked Jim, and I know you've heard it before, but I asked Jim just to show you briefly the outline, and then maybe you don't want to approach it tonight, and I, if you're gonna continue our hearing too, maybe you want to wait until then, but I asked Jim to just do a, uh, brief overview for you of our, um, security program, which I think you're familiar with, but I, I would like to put it on the record if, and if, as I said, if you're gonna continue the hearing and you want to wait because of the late hour, we're happy to come back and do it, but if you'd like it now, we're happy to do it now.
Well, there's no doubt we're gonna continue this hearing. Um, me and Jim already had that conversation, because of the time restraints we have tonight. How's the board feeling? You want to continue with some of this deliberation? You want to just get, get it all at the next meeting? That's now gonna be next Wednesday. You, you think?
I, I don't mind, I, I don't mind hearing it and going through it.
Can I just show them?
I know we can't vote on it, 'cause we.
Right.
You know, the chicken and the egg, what comes first.
Why don't we hold?
I'd like to understand it and.
If you don't mind, what we'd like to do is start with this, uh.
If we could put the two ears side by side. Now, and with respect to what you've heard from the folks earlier tonight from Splitsville and what you've heard a minute ago from Steve, the, um, the intent of the liquor license transfer to Splitsville and the alteration of premises for Gillette Stadium is to, is to take an underutilized license that is utilized today, and put it to use on a three hundred and sixty-five day year basis, creating a significant capital expenditure, as you've heard, uh, in the Town of Foxborough, creating job, economic stimulus, uh, as well as direct tax route to the town. And also, as Steve pointed out, and I'll spend a little more time once I've walked through the maps, the al- this specific alteration of premises, uh, doesn't change what we do today. It just allows us to continue what we're doing today in terms of, um, our operation at Gillette Stadium. And, uh, I do think it's important to note that Gillette Stadium, um, when you look at this map, it shows three distinct areas collectively on the site. Uh, the first is the area highlighted in red. The area highlighted in red is our current Gillette Stadium.
Could I ask a question about that, what you're just pointing to right now? I'm not certain that I've seen a change that included the playing fields in that footprint. Can you tell us the date that that alteration happened?
Uh, I believe that was, um, it was either when Gillette Stadium opened or two thousand four. Uh, but the playing fields have been included in the Gillette's liquor license footprint minimally, um, in two thousand four. Uh, and I could check my records to see if it was prior to that.
Thank you.
Um, and I, I may have something tonight I can look for. So currently, this is the Gil- this red line is the Gillette Stadium liquor license footprint, and as I indicated minimally, dating back to two thousand four. The practice fields, the training camp bleachers, and the area behind the training camp bleachers have been included in the Gillette Stadium all alcohol liquor license. We came in front of the board, um, earlier this year, and we took the license that covered our hospitality zone and lower practice field, as you know, uh, and the board approved that transfer, uh, to Sega Hibachi Steakhouse, which knock on wood will be opening soon. The area in green is the Foxborough Realty Associates liquor license. This is the current demarcation line for the, for the Foxborough Realty liquor license. And this is the license that we're proposing to transfer to Splitsville. And the purpose of our alteration of premises, um, is to take the existing Gillette Stadium footprint, which does extend through the upper practice fields, the training camp bleachers, the area behind the training camp bleachers, in this area in here, and extend it to the outline of our perimeter fencing. So this entire area, um, and, uh, I was able to walk this area with, um, Ginny, um, as well as, uh, former town council.
In turn.
John Gray, as well as Chief Investigator Ted Mahoney of the A B C C, a while back, uh, just to show specifically where that footprint lies, and also to show that it is entirely contained within perimeter fencing, attached within the Gillette Stadium footprint. So with the alteration of premises, what you're going to have is an extension of the existing Gillette Stadium license to cover the Dana Fava Field House and a lower practice field, all within perimeter fencing. I, I am the manager, as you know, the manager of record for the liquor license, for Gillette Stadium and for Foxborough Realty Associates. But I think it's important for the board, uh, or for me to just, uh, note to the board that, uh, the way we manage, uh, our operation, uh, at Gillette Stadium is without looking at what the liquor licenses are. Uh, and when I say that, uh, we have a unified command structure. So the same policies and procedures that we apply to the Gillette Stadium liquor license are identical to the policies that we apply to the Foxborough Realty Associate license, and were identical to the license that we had before we transferred it to Sega. And when I say that it's unified, it's one alcohol manager, it's one director of food and beverage, uh, David Wheeler, uh, it's one chief of security, uh, Mark Briggs, it's one management team. Uh, and the people that we have working in those areas, you know, the servers, the security personnel, they're interchangeable parts for us, that we can have a server that is working the bar in the club one day. Uh, they could be a suite attendant the next, and they could be working in the Dana Fava Field House on a different day. But each of those people go through the same team training. Each of those people follow the same process. They each follow the same, uh, leadership. And that unified team gives you one consistent application. If you do approve the alteration of premises for Gillette Stadium, um, it, it, it's not, like I said, it's not changing what we do. It is, um, it's doing it under one license. We're not adding more events. We're not adding more people. You know, we're not, we're not negatively impacting neighbors and abutters. These are things that we do. So a couple of the highlights, and then I wanted to share with you, um, our summary of policies and procedures, the things that we do to make sure that we're, uh, we're doing the safe service of alcohol. You know, and when I also, when I talk about uniform control, um, it also involves a consistent, uh, application of the Town of Foxborough liquor regu- liquor regulations. You know, I had the pleasure of working with, uh, Selectwoman Brew and Chief O'Leary on the new regulations that were approved, uh, about a year and a half ago. But those regulations are uni- uniformly applied by the same personnel for each of those licenses. With, with respect to public safety issues, um, we work, uh, very hard with Chief O'Leary, at every event that we do, um, and for every event that we do, so that we, our goal is to strive to be always on the same page with Chief O'Leary, so that we're providing the highest, um, that, safety value in terms of what we do, so that we have no underage drinkers, that we're not over-serving, that we're following all the tenants that a good, uh, practitioner of alcohol service would. And with that, what I'd like to do is I'd like to hand out, uh, a copy of our policies and procedures and walk through them for a moment.
I'll hand that over to you.
Uh, the fir- I would like to say on, on behalf of myself, that when we have a Patriot game on Sunday, I know everyone focuses on what goes on, on the field, and, uh, we ride the wave of emotions when the Patriots win or lose. But for me, a successful day at Gillette Stadium is two things. One is proper service of alcohol, every transaction, every time. And equally as important, equally as important to me, is that people come safely and they go home safely. That's my, that's my game day. Um, and regardless of what happens on the field, if we execute that, I feel that we've done our job. Um, and so as I come into each day, that's my, my first and foremost priority, which is why I talk to Chief O'Leary, which is why I talk to Lieutenant Stewart, uh, which is why we have the A B C C down voluntarily and involuntarily, because we want to do proper service of alcohol every time, so that people can come down, enjoy our entertainment, be safe, and get home. So our statement, uh, which I'll let you read, focuses on that. The first thing in our policies and procedures is monitoring. The Foxborough Police, the Massachusetts State Police, and our stadium staff are positioned throughout the stadium, throughout the gates, and throughout the parking lots to monitor alcohol service and consumption by patrons coming to events at Gillette Stadium. And we do take it, um, one step further than I think most operations would, uh, and Chief O'Leary can attest to it. We hold an all-agency meeting before every event we have at Gillette Stadium, whether it's a Revolution game, a UMass game, a concert, NCAA lacrosse, or an NFL football game. And we meet with all the public safety agencies. It includes Foxborough Fire Department Chief Hatfield. It includes Chief O'Leary, Lieutenant Stewart, uh, and at times, other partners who are assisting the chief and myself and others in the implementation of public safety. Uh, and those briefings are important to us, 'cause it helps us align our mission with respect to alcohol service for each and every event. Uh, secondly, uh, team training. You know, that's, that's our standard of training. It's a nationally recognized training program, as I believe the board's aware. But what we're proud of as an organization is that, um, Team Coalition ranks NFL teams on how well they do at team training and the number of staff that they train. Uh, and for each of the last nine years, in the NFL, out of the thirty-one stadiums that host, uh, NFL games, we have received Team Coalition's Championship Performance Training Award. Uh, and we've received it every year, uh, that MLS has awarded that honor. So the MLS came in on the heels of the NFL and started awarding it several years ago, and every year they've awarded it to an NFL team, and, I'm sorry, an MLS team, we've gotten the award. Uh, in terms of our sales policies, um, you know, it's a two-drink limit, but I think the important thing to note is that, uh, we stopped the service of alcohol in the stadium fifteen minutes, no later than fifteen minutes into the third quarter. But ultimately, um, for every event that we, that we host, um, the exact time is determined by Chief O'Leary. So either myself, or Mark Briggs, or David Wheeler is in communication with Chief O'Leary, and Chief O'Leary tells us the specific time on the watch when we shut off the service of alcohol. And I believe, as Chief O'Leary would attest to, um, when he says to shut off alcohol at two twenty-three, alcohol is shut off at two twenty-three. Uh, and it's not one person going location to location to location, so it takes fifteen minutes to do it. It's a team of people responding immediately at that time to shut off our taps. Designated Driver Program, uh, it's one of the things I'm more proud of, uh, in terms of our, uh, our responsibility for safe service of alcohol. In conjunction with Team, Team Coalition, uh, and the Be a Hero campaign. And if you don't know much about the Be a Hero campaign, um, I encourage you to go to their website. It's an incredibly sad story, uh, but I've had the wonderful opportunity to, uh, to get to know the Elliott family who lost their son to a drunk driver. Uh, and they've become partners of ours, not only for Gillette Stadium, not only for Patriot Place, uh, but we've introduced them, uh, to Norfolk District Attorney Morrissey and his office, uh, and they're now partnering with the Hero Campaign. Uh, we've introduced them to Chief Ted Mahoney, um, and they're partnering with them. It's a, it's a wonderful organization, uh, but for what, what it does for us, it gives meaning behind our Designated Driver Program. And in terms of, of what we've done, um, for the fourth year in a row, we're gonna lead the NFL in the number of designated driver pledges. And to put it in context, um, the, the year we set our personal goal, which was two thousand eleven, we signed up twenty-three thousand five hundred and eighty people to be designated drivers at ten Patriot games. Uh, and our next closest competitor was the Baltimore Ravens, who were over eight thousand pledges less than us. So each of the last four years, uh, we've led the league in that. Uh, and I am proud to say, uh, through Sunday, we continue to lead the league and expect to lead the league at the end of the year. Although I do say to the Elliott's, that I would like someone, I would like to set a personal record for Gillette Stadium, but I'd like some other NFL team to beat me, because that means someone else is getting home safe and other venues are being as safe as we are. Management by walking around, that's what we call it. But I think the important note on management by walking around is that we, um, as a responsible server, uh, of alcohol, have separate supervisors that look for different things. So we have separate supervisors that focus on our concessions locations. We have separate supervisors that focus on our portable location, you know, the beer carts. And we have separate supervisors that focus on the hawkers, um, because they're really kind of three distinct operations. Uh, but every one of our supervisors is team-trained, and we, and we narrowly focus them so that they're not spread too thin. You know, so our supervisors that do concession stands typically do two concession stands, and they're always right next to each other. Gillette Stadium has alcohol-free sections. Um, they're very well-received. Uh, we also serve non-alcoholic beer, um, as well as, uh, all other non-alcoholic beverages. I talked about communication with Chief O'Leary and with Lieutenant Stewart. That's ongoing, that's consistent, it's regular. You know, I, I think if I don't see Chief O'Leary twice a week, uh, from the middle of May till the end of December, I'd be surprised. And this weekend, Chief, if you're still here, I'm seeing you quite a bit. We've got three events, um, two on Saturday, uh, and one on Sunday. I heard commentary earlier about, um, uh, advanced ID checker machines. We have the same machine that Holliday Millen has at Gillette Stadium. Um, it's in our guest services booth. Uh, and what we use that for is that if we have a questionable ID, um, we send that individual to that location. They'll have their ID checked by, um, by the machine, and that machine will say whether it's valid or not. And both Chief O'Leary and the A B C C have told us that is the, that is the best machine on the market, and that, you know, that it is as close to foolproof as anything. So if, if someone who looks young comes to us, we send them there, they get their ID checked. If it's valid, and the person checking it is not someone involved in the service of alcohol. So, uh, you may say, do they have, they have skin in the game? They don't. It's a separate department. It's our security department under Mark Briggs that conducts that check. And if, if the ID is valid, they get a separate wristband, which our servers know is valid. So when they come back and say, here's my ID, someone thought I was too young, I've had it checked, we've got a wristband to prove it. Ticket revocations. Um, we can. We consistently, after every event, any ejection, arrest by Chief O'Leary, protective custody by Chief O'Leary, arrest or protective custody by the Mass. State Police comes through my office, and we review them. Because people who misbehave in our stadium, whether it's alcohol-related or not, are treated quite harshly, to be honest with you, because we don't want that element in our stadium or coming back. And as Chief O'Leary will also attest, if anyone is placed in protective custody, or if anyone is arrested, they receive a letter of disinvite that says they can't come back to Gillette Stadium for any event until they complete an alcohol course. And that's, that's an online, nationally-accredited course. And then we still have the discretion on whether we allow them to come back or not. We maintain 2013 ID checking guys in multiple locations throughout the buildings, all of our vending rooms, main bars, guest services booths, because we want our servers, and we've trained our servers to go and look at them before every event. In terms of our policies and procedures documents, the one that I'd like to highlight is that before the service of alcohol, every server at Gillette Stadium signs, signs a form that says they agree to not only all the rules and regulations, which are the laws of the Commonwealth and the regulations of the Town of Foxborough, but they also sign off on our policies. So if we have a policy that is even tougher than what the town does, they have to sign off on it. So we are reinforcing to all our servers, yes, they're team-trained, yes, they're supervised, yes, they're watched, but we're asking them each and every time that they're going to serve alcohol to sign off on the form. They do it every game. So if someone's going to work the game at noon, if someone's going to work the UMass game at noon, if they're going to work the game on Sunday, they're going to sign that form twice. And lastly, you know, we, we conduct periodic reviews with the Massachusetts ABCC. You know, we have one announced visit every year where they come out, they walk around, they review our procedures, they speak with our staff, they critique our operations. But we also have unannounced visits, as you would suspect and you'd like. So we welcome that, and we welcome input from them, as well as input from Chief O'Leary on all matters. And also, as an organization, we continue to partner with District Attorney Morrissey on his awareness campaigns. And we have Chief O'Leary, Chief Investigator Ted Mahoney, District Attorney Morrissey, the Hero Campaign, all coming to Patriot Place on November 11th to launch the District Attorney's Awareness Campaign for the holidays, which is Observe, Don't Overserve. You know, so in sum, our goal and our priority between myself, David Wheeler, and Mark Briggs as a leadership team of Gillette Stadium, our goal is the proper service of alcohol every time someone comes to our venue, at every transaction, at every game. And with respect to the alteration of premises, it's not changing what we do, it's not adding more people, it's not adding more people to the mix, it's just a continuance of what we're currently doing by expanding the Gillette Stadium license to cover the Dana Farber Fieldhouse in the lower practice field. So that's, that's my summary of policies and procedures. And, you know, I welcome any questions you may have with respect to either the documents we've shown or our policies and procedures.
Okay, thank you. John, any questions this time?
When you start down the other one, I got a, I'm formulating a question on the left.
I'll start with, great.
What type of functions do you have in the practice fields that are outlined as currently part of the stadium footprint?
The, there's not a significant number of events out there, but from time to time, in conjunction with things on the side of the practice field, we have served alcohol so in the, in the bleachers overlooking the practice field, sometimes in conjunction with practices. And then several years ago, and we stopped the operation, but we did routinely serve alcohol at our training camp, our open training camp practices. So, so it has been, that area has been used more hospitality-based, and then several years ago, we used it for every day of training camp, but, you know, we decided to do away with that practice.
Okay, John?
It's formulated. Why was it necessary to have a separate license for the fieldhouse when it was built? And why didn't you try to enjoin it to the property at that point?
Honestly, from my, from my perspective, when I became the liquor license manager in 2013, it was already in place, and I never, and I never thought to, to join the two. So, you know, all three of those, all three of those liquor licenses date to prior to Gillette Stadium.
And the reason I ask is I'm sure that liquor license was granted with its limited use in mind. And for that liquor license now to be, you know, you call it underutilized, and it probably is. But to have that be transferred to a place that's going to be seven days a week throughout the year, it's, it's, it's a different impact.
Yeah. And while I do say it is underutilized, it is a necessary component. It is a necessary and critical component of our operation.
No, I understand what you do up there. You explained it the day I was up there. But I'm just wondering why, why you came before the town and asked for a license to be granted for that location? When you, when you knew that it wasn't going to have that many, or that much activity?
I think if you look at the history of that license, that license is one of the licenses that has been involved at the stadium since it was Sullivan Stadium, has been a license there. And it not, not a new license granted by the town for that area, that was a license that might have even gone back to the raceway when the crowds...
Well, it obviously had to move.
But it was a license they already had. It wasn't a license that was granted by the town. It was, it was one of the licenses they already had.
Seeing the time here, and we still got a few other things to cover, do you want to continue with this? Sandra, is there any need that we have to do action tonight? Is there anything pressing on there, grant application, acceptance, I mean, or?
No.
Okay. And, and, and obviously, the next four discussions we have can weigh two. All right, so we got five more minutes here, if we want to be out of here for 10 o'clock.
I was hoping that we would be able to finalize the draft for the town manager thing.
Then we need to do that.
Yeah. Because they, ideally, we want to advertise that.
Right. So, that's why I said earlier, I think we should continue this. Does anybody disagree?
Well, we have to continue this.
Right, right. I mean, I mean, now, or do we want to stay late? I mean, not, because what I'm trying to do is appease the school system, letting us use their building while we're having some transition issues at the town hall, and they have to keep their janitorial staff in overtime if we stay beyond 10 o'clock. That's the only reason for this conversation. So, yeah, I would say that we better start continuing this now so we can have our final draft on the town manager proposal and move forward. Does anybody disagree?
No. Do you want a motion to continue?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your understanding.
Before we talk, and I hate to throw a wrench in, but I had a conflict on Tuesday. I have a conflict on Wednesday. I was able to move my Tuesday to a Wednesday. So if, if there's an opportunity to meet next Tuesday, a day earlier, and I know, I don't know what it does to you guys, but I can't meet on Wednes... One of them had to go. I physically can't meet on Wednesday. I can change it on Tuesday.
Now, is Attorney DeLuca with you on Tuesday already, Sandra?
With all the liquor license violators, those have all been set up, yeah.
Okay. With Attorney DeLuca?
And the chief.
Yeah, but our, our plan, Mr. Chairman, our plan was to, to meet with all of those that were notified regarding a hearing that's scheduled in November, November 12th, I think. This was an opportunity for the principals to get together, maybe we can come to some agreed resolutions to make your hearing on the 12th go that much easier.
Expedient, yeah.
Right. So, you know, it, it, if, you know, these matters take priority, it's really your call. If these matters take priority, we'll, we'll certainly deal with these and, and then put, you know, put in the pipeline, if you will, the, the additional matters to be heard at some later time.
What time are you scheduled for on Tuesday?
That was a meeting that we had scheduled for 6:30, and our, we anticipated it'd go for an hour or two to meet with each of the, those that, each of those applicants that were being cited. There was four, I think, total. It, it may not take that long ultimately. So I, I'm perfectly satisfied to, to work with you guys. If these matters take priority, let's do these, and we'll deal with the other stuff at some later time.
Can we start at 7:30 and give you an hour before it?
Yeah, I'm just going to start, I think. But we already made the motion to move the other meeting.
It's still during the, you can still do it during this meeting to change it.
Right. That's why I'm just saying, we need to change both, so let's do that. Make a motion for the 7:30 to, which one do we want to handle first? This one, since we've had a little discussion on this one?
Let me ask you, Sue, how do we vote? This is to Counsel DeLuca. How do we approve or disapprove? Say if we want to approve the Splitsville license, if there's none available? And how do we, so it would seem like this one would have to come first from the logistics, correct?
Yeah. My recommendation would be to, to continue this hearing as you intend. Complete the hearing process here, close the public meeting. Then you'll have deliberations to do on both. And then you can take them up in whichever order you choose.
Okay, yeah, okay.
But, but my question is, if we approve Splitsville liquor license to grant them a license, there's no license to grant them until this one is approved to transfer, is that correct?
No, 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 no. They can move that one, we just can't...
They're just moving it, they can...
Can I grant this until...
This, this is, I see it's two entities. If we didn't approve the expansion of the, the footprint of the stadium, then I think, in my opinion, it'd be held to do in some, in the Dana Farber area, one-day licensing until we come to some resolution or there's another one available. Am I right or wrong?
I think if you approve the Splitsville license, then we have the opportunity to transfer the license from the Dana Farber Fieldhouse to Splitsville.
Correct.
And then the next topic is, will you allow the alteration of premises so that we can continue to operate in the Dana Farber Fieldhouse? And if you do, then that's fine. If you don't, then we have to look at alternatives such as the one-day license that you just mentioned.
I hear an echo.
I think that's the word.
Okay. So, I entertain a motion to continue this to next Tuesday at 7:30?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
And then we will revisit, John, the last motion you made for Splitsville's deliberation in the public.
What date is it on now?
It is going to be Tuesday.
November 5th.
At 8:30.
Okay. I'll move that we continue the public hearing on the Splitsville matter to Tuesday.
We already closed it.
Oh, you want to reopen it?
No, no, deliberation.
We're just going to deliberate.
Oh, all right. This is an amended motion.
Yes.
To continue the hearing to...
11:05.
11:05 at, at 8:30. Thank you.
Let's continue the discussion.
Yep.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Okay, so we need to notify Splitsville personnel, which I'm...
Just ask one question.
Your first.
Was there a motion to close the public hearing?
Do you? No, no. Continue the public hearing to the 7:30, 11:05.
Okay.
All right. Now that I can see the clock.
Which is...
This will be first at 7:30.
The next.
Okay. And then, these other matters will put on the same night, Sandra. I'm going to make that, yeah, don't make us reprint all this, ladies and gentlemen.
From the chair. From the board, not from me.
Bring it all back. Okay, Lorraine, you have it.
Okay, so, where we are right now with the town manager search process is that we have received input from a number of private citizens, chairs, and members of different boards and committees. And all of us have provided feedback to the Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management. We've been working with Richard Kobayashi, the senior associate there. And what we have in front of us now is a final draft profile for the town manager position. So, from a timeline standpoint, if we can approve this tonight as the final draft with whatever typos, or if there are any fine-tuning that you'd like to make, we can then forward this to, I can forward this to Mr. Kobayashi tomorrow. And the plan would be to begin advertising for the month of November, close down the application process at the end of November. They would take approximately one week to review all of the applications, and then they would bring forward a pool of applicants to the members of the search committee to begin their review process. Also included in this packet is a draft charge for that search committee, but we could do that at a different meeting, so we don't have to do that tonight. The charge really explains to the search committee what, I'm sorry, the screening committee, what exactly the board expects in terms of them bringing forward candidates to us for a final review. So, has everybody had a chance to go through this final draft? I, I know there's a typo, we have to correct the spelling of invensis in here.
Actually, I've got a few, Lorraine, if you, if you don't mind. I caught that first one, it's invensis versus avensis.
Right, right.
And there are some typos throughout, and I can share those later, but...
Okay.
The biggest issues are, I think it's on the second to last page, I think it's meant to say assistant town manager.
Assistant town...
Town manager, and then insert the word also after manager, and a complex environment will be considered.
Okay.
Then I struck out the word alternatively, and I began the sentence with a capital P, unprofessionally trained. Changed manager to managers, plural.
Professionally trained and experienced managers of complex organizations.
Right. And then I struck, I struck out at the end, gained through volunteer service will be considered. I mean, I, I'm not making that a requirement. I know that Dick Kobayachi threw that in as a suggestion, but I, I, I wouldn't make that a requirement. That, that may, that may actually dissuade some people who would be skilled from, for Also, too, why are you considering that? Down in the salary and schedule, I know that the salary of our previous town manager was public record.
Right.
It's just my own style, and I just think it's, it's bad form to, to basically pre-position the salary. So I struck out the total compensation for the previous incumbent was in the mid-150s. If they want to look that up, they can, but I just...
Everybody agree?
It's a matter of style.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Going back to the decision-making processes of a town government, gain through volunteer service...
Should we open it up to the board for any other comments and go back to that one?
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody else have any comments?
Jenny? No. I have a comment on what Lorraine's coming to take on.
Okay, so, why don't you speak?
Oh, well, I mean, I, I agree, I agree, John. I think that should be taken out. I don't want, I want, you know, it's, it's nice to have someone who's gained experience through volunteer service to a town, but I, I don't think that should be a real...
Requirement.
Requirement, yeah. I think it's nice.
Two saying no, James?
Yeah.
Want this stricken?
I, I don't have a preference.
Okay. I'll be three, let's get rid of it.
Okay. Can I just ask a question, though?
Sure.
So, decision-making processes of a town government will be considered? Can you just strike the gain through volunteer service, but still they should have some familiarity with how town government works?
I thought that's all we were striking was the volunteer part of it.
Let me go back to what I'm striking and we'll get it right.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just striking out gain through volunteer service.
Right, okay.
Just strike that out. The rest of it's fine.
Gotcha. Okay, yep.
Okay. Any other amendments?
We got it?
No. I think general, I mean, there's eight pages of what we're looking for, for a town manager. I think we just need to get off the dach and get it going.
Yeah.
This thing's been circulating to the different groups and us for a couple weeks now.
Yeah.
If we've got to outline that they got... If we've got to outline that they got to understand town government, and it's going to be written in here. God help the guy that applauds it.
I know.
First time I've lopped all night. Okay.
All right. So, can I have a motion to approve this as the final draft?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the-
Copy, not draft.
The final writing, as, as amended, and to be submitted to Dick Kobayachi for publication.
Sir.
Any discussion?
Just to let the, the public know, this profile was reviewed by department heads and, and committee members and everything. It got a thorough review, and I think there was a lot of input to it. So I, I think it's a really good profile of town Foxborough, that reliable profile.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero.
So I'll, I'll bring the charter for the screening committee to the next meeting, and we can just go over that. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. We'll see you on, on Tuesday, the 5th, at 7:30. Thank you. All right.